Good evening. It is now 5:30 and I would like to call the November 16th, 2021, Meeting of the Richland 2 School Board Meeting to Order. May I have a motion to go into Executive Session? Ms. Mackey.
I don't know if it's on. Can you hear me? Oh, it is now. I'm sorry. I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing student appeals and legal advice regarding Board Policy BID.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna take a hand vote. I'm not up. Everybody's not up electronically. If you raise your hand. Any opposed? Was that, is that you, Dr. Scott? We can't hear you.
Yes, for me.
I'm sorry. Say it again?
She said yes.
You said yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, unanimously, we will now move into Executive Session. Okay, at this time, I'd like to have a motion to come out of Executive Session.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I'll make a motion that we ended Executive Session at 6:39 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? We can vote electronically? Oh, wait a minute. Okay, mine just went blank. I'm gonna have to vote. Hand vote, please. Okay, I think they were all in affirmation. Any names? Seeing none, motion passes. At this time, we'll move on to our next section, which is... Hang on just a second. Let me get a little bit organized here. 3.1, an inspirational moment and the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, it gives me great pleasure to have a student performance and it's the 8th Grade Orchestra from Blythewood Middle School. The 8th Grade Orchestra from Blythewood Middle School is a group of orchestra students who've been performing together since the 6th Grade. Mrs. Carson Coombs is the orchestra director at Blythewood Middle and is in her 5th year of teaching at the school. Her 7th and 8th Grade ensembles have received excellent and superior ratings at Concert Performance Assessment, and her 6th Grade orchestras enjoy traveling to perform at the Carolins Music Festival of Music each spring. Mrs. Coombs thoroughly enjoys teaching middle school and loves her students and the music they make together each day in the orchestra room. Despite these past 2 years being drastically different, she is proud of her students' resilience and happily encourages her students' fondness of making music together. It is a pleasure to have you all here tonight. Bless you. Take it away.
Alright, thank you and good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Carson Coombs and I'm excited to be here with these 3 students tonight, talking about how much music is inspiring and how much fun it is for us. Our school, Blythewood Middle School, hosts an annual trunk or treat event every October that invites families and students from the community to come to BMS, dressed up in costume and ready to haul in quite a bit of Halloween candy. This year, I decided to ask my 8th Grade Orchestra students if they would host a trunk with me. Our theme was "Welcome to the Zoo" and my wonderful husband and I dressed up as zookeepers and each student dressed up as an animal of their choosing. And on top of that, we played one of our pieces that we were preparing in class called "Moonlight Tango" for the crowd to listen to and enjoy. Well, rain did come the day of the event, so we set ourselves up and played in the gym right in between loudspeakers playing Monster Mash and Stevie Wonder's Superstition. I think I speak for all of the students participating with me tonight when I say that we had an absolute blast. They played well and frequently and were quick to help pass out candy and collect some candy of their own. To share their experience at the trunk or treat event and their experience in orchestra itself, please welcome Malin Carter, Pamela McGill, and Elizabeth McKay.
Hello and good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Malin Carter and I'm an 8th Grade student at Blythewood Middle School. I play the viola for orchestra and I've been playing it for 3 years now. Over the years, I have learned the importance of playing an instrument and that it requires more than just learning the skill, but it also requires working together as a team. Everyone has their own individual parts, but together we create beautiful music. One of the inspirational moments for me at the trunk or treat was to serve the community. Many children attended and it was obvious that they had a great time. It was a safe and fun event. One of my favorite musicians who inspires me is Stevie Wonder because although being blind, he taught himself how to play the drums, piano, and harmonica all before the age of 10. To end off my statement, I'm going to share a quote by Stevie Wonder. He said, quote unquote, "Just because a man lacks the use of his eyes doesn't mean he lacks vision." We all should have a vision, a vision to make the world a better place, a vision to help those in our community who are in need, and appreciate the power of music education in the arts. Thank you for having me here and have a nice night.
Hello, I'm Pamela McGill. I'm part of the 8th Grade Orchestra at Blythewood Middle. On October 28th, me and my, me and a few classmates played our instrument at the BMS trunk or treat. What I enjoyed at the trunk or treat was performing "Moonlight Tango" for the first time in front of a crowd after practicing and learning it for weeks. Playing at the trunk or treat was motivating for me since I usually get nervous to perform in front of others, but playing with my orchestra peers, it helped me overcome my fear of playing my violin around others. But as we were at the event, it was exciting to see fellow students walk around in their unique costumes and visit our section to collect candy and hear us play. Thank you for your time and have a wonderful evening.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth McKay. I'm a student at Blythewood Middle School. I participated in the trunk or treat and what I really enjoyed was being able to play in such of a big crowd. The 20 minutes before we were going to perform, I grew super nervous because I had forgotten that my friends were gonna be there. And as you know, that's terrifying for a 14-year-old. But the second we began to play, all that shook off and I got super confident and super excited because people started to pull out their cameras and record us and I remember thinking, "Wow, we must sound really good for people to record us." From the corner of my eye, I noticed some kids watching us and I remember when I was younger and I had heard classical music and it was even more magical when I watched some kids that were only 3 or 4 years older than me play it. What I would say to kids that might have been mesmerized by the experience as me, I'd say, "Join orchestra" because it gives you a sense of integrity and teamwork and appreciation for music itself. Thank you.
Thank you again for having us.
Thank you, ladies, for sharing your passion of music with us this evening and inspiring us. We appreciate that. Everyone else in the room, if you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance, let us all stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to 4.1, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the agenda for the November 16th, 2021 Regular Board Meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Manning. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for the vote. We'll do it electronically. Motion passes 6 to 1. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the November 16th, 2021 Board Meeting.
Okay, do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will call for the vote. Motion carries unanimously 7 to 0. Moving on. Going on to 5 point... Well, I'm sorry, public participation 6.1? No, we should be at 6.1 already. We don't, no, we should be at 7.1. Okay. No, no, no. Hang on. We should be at 7.1, student appeals. No, 6.1.
6.1.
I got it. Thank you. Appreciate it. It keep jumping around on me, but thank you. Um, let's move to 6.1, public participation. Before each public participation, I'd like to read this and we will be reading this before every public participation that we have. The Chairman of the Board will introduce speakers who have previously submitted a request to the Board at the appropriate time during the meeting and invite them to make comments on agenda topics. Speakers may offer objective comments on school operations and programs that concern them. The Board will not permit in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Okay, and also, one other housekeeping thing, we're no longer going to be wiping the mic. There is hand sanitizer up at the mic, so when you finish speaking, if you would like, you can put some on and move on to the next speaker and we will consistently be doing that. Is that the process we're working with Libby tonight? Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move on to our first speaker. Our first speaker for the evening is going to be Gary Ginn. Ginn.
Since we are in a little different setup, one thing I forgot to tell you is that the timer, since they're not facing the screen, the timer is, will show up on this monitor right here that shows them the screen.
Okay.
Your time should show up right there.
Will it show, so it won't show up there at all?
It'll show up on there.
Okay.
And on that monitor on the page.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I don't have to tap on the table anymore. I appreciate you. That's fine. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chairman and School Board, I would like to address y'all and we, the parents, we, the people, we, the taxpayers, we, the ones that pay your salary, we, the voters, that put you in the School Board Office and making one final request, that you lift the mask mandate. We also request that you stop coercing our children to get vaccinated. We, the parents, are at the point that you can stop acting like 3rd graders that don't get their way and protest against parents by pitching tantrums and fighting amongst yourselves. We feel like it is time that you understand that just like parents disciplining our children that are there will be dire consequences for your actions. There will be no get-backs, no threats. We will remove you from your superintendent job and your elected positions. It might not be this year, but next year is coming fast. We don't care what anybody else says. We care about doing what the CDC and the DAIC says, but our numbers are down. Our numbers are down. That's the reason the City of Columbia's removed their mask mandate. Remove the mask. When your budget comes up short next year of over $100 million, remember, we, the taxpayers, we, the parents, we, the people, and we, your employers, will not vote to give you any more bonding or funding. We've already had legislators tell the parents that they're gonna cut your budget. They're gonna cut all your stuff for, for these mask mandates that you put upon us and our children. U.S. Board Members should be ashamed of letting certain people make your decisions for you. It's time that you vote and take up your positions that we elected you for, to remove the mask. Quit letting these people ruin your reputations of God-fearing people and leaders of this district. Change your ways. Get rid of the CRT, SRL, diversity visions, and start reading, writing, and arithmetic. History repeats itself. To start teaching real history, not propaganda. You wonder why we have fights in school? It's because you're teaching hate at board meetings amongst yourselves and the parents you serve. A good leader leads by examples, by showing their followers how to lead. We, the people, we, the parents, we, the taxpayers, we, the voters, have spoken. Board Members, vote to remove the mask. Thank you. And basically, the other problem is...
Um, your time. Thank you. We appreciate you. Our next speaker will be Barbara Atkins Liggins.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I live in the Briarwood neighborhood where 2 District 2 schools are located, Windsor Elementary and E.L. Wright. I have lived there for 30 years. My property is located on Hopkirk Road on the side of Windsor Elementary. The school is situated on a mound. There were ground cover and shrubbery around the side of the school surrounding it to impede the runoff of water to the neighborhood. Well, that, it has been there for 28-plus years and this was removed in November of 2019. I went to the school to express my concern while it was being removed and I spoke with the principal. I was concerned about the water runoff and was told that engineers had taken that into consideration to the impact to the neighborhood and there should not be a problem. If there was a problem, I was to contact the District 2 representative, which I did. The problem continues and whenever there is a downpour of rain, it floods my garage and comes up to the steps. In 2021, District 2 facilitated upgrading the other end of the property, of the school property, to correct the runoff on that end. But, and so that would be the end of my street, but they did not correct my end of the street. And I was informed that engineers decided that nothing needed to be done on that side of the street because there should not be a problem because the existing water management should take care of that. Well, there is a problem. This is not happening. None of the measures that have been taken to impede the force of the runoff from the school property onto my property have worked. So my questions are, what is the school district's commitment and responsibility to the community? Especially communities that have schools located within them. Shouldn't residential concerns be considered when there are problems? I have listened to your meetings. I have heard it stated that the district is committed to the communities. But sometimes I wonder have the environmental impacts been considered when plans are being made? And does it seem prudent when something is happening in a neighborhood that we at least talk with the HO, President of HOA? When a school is in a neighborhood, it becomes part of the neighborhood.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I have to stop you, but, but we will, we, we, thank you. But we'll, we'll, we'll see what we can do. Thank you. Appreciate you.
I didn't watch the time. Thank you.
That's okay. You're fine. Thank you. Okay, next we have David S. Gale.
Character and dignity. During the October 26th Board Meeting, someone who graduated from Francis Marion talked about demeanor and civility. He mentioned he was disheartened at the last Board Meeting, speaking of the one on October 12th. On October 26th, he said, "Our character and dignity is always at stake." He asked of himself, "What am I going to do to ensure that mine stays intact?" If the persons that stood at the podium on October 26th presented their case in such a respectful way as stated, why did the Francis Marion graduate not have the demeanor, civility, character, and dignity to look at all of them as if, as they were speaking? Instead, he purposely looked away. It has been, if he has an expectation of how he wants his children to conduct themselves, would he be okay if they did not pay attention? Did not pay attention to the teacher or the other students in the class? Civility and demeanor. Remember, our character and dignity is always at stake. Per the district policy, each public participation will not exceed 3 minutes unless waived by a majority vote of the Board. There are only, there are allotted, we are allotted only 3 minutes when exercising our First Amendment right. However, during that same Board Meeting on the 26th, 3 members of the Board were not subjected to the same rule. Very odd. The person who was the former adjunct professor at USC Upstate spoke for 6 minutes and 44 seconds. That Francis Marion graduate spoke for 6 minutes and 8 seconds. The person who is a proud member of Delta, Sigma, Theta sorority was allowed to speak for 4 minutes and 9 seconds. I find it odd that the constituents, the ones that voted the Board Members into their office, only get 3 minutes, whereas the elected officials, the ones who serve the public, are allowed to get much more than 3 minutes. Last topic is leadership. A leader has been defined as anyone who by virtue of assumed role or assigned responsibility inspires and influences people to accomplish organizational goals. You are all leaders. You were chosen by the public citizens. It takes a leader to be a Board Member. Leadership is hard, very, very hard. It's hard when you have not had the necessarily parliamentary training at your own expense. Leadership is hard. It's even harder, you know it's even harder when you're not prepared to lead.
Thank you. We appreciate you. At this time, we'll have Dr. Hope Reed.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Davis. I want to say thank you, Dr. Davis, because Richland County School District 2 students are doing well. I want to thank you for the continual mask mandate as our educators feel safer because of it. Richland 2 has consistently had the lowest number of cases compared to the other school districts, even though logistically we are larger. How can this be possible? It is largely due to the fact that you care about us. You are the embodiment of bravery, wisdom, and discernment. And it is easy to say that you exemplify these admirable traits because you actually do things that show that you care. You are one who shows the responsibilities of the leaders in the face of good times and bad and you do not allow others to exert undue influence on your decision-making, no matter the clamor outside and in. There are many who cannot say the same about their decision-making process. The steps that are taken to arrive at such a weighted decision to enforce a mask mandate must be ordered, logical, and rational. Decision made in the interest of over 25,000 stakeholders must make sense. It must add up. Thank you, Dr. Davis, for caring not just for one, but for many. Even more, thank you for not being afraid to care for us all. Please allow me to interject. The educators of Richland School District 2 would like to say that the children are doing well because of you. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have Ms. Gale Coker.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Davis, and Board Members. And because I know I have 3 minutes, I wrote it down so I can stay on point. First, I want to thank you for the job that I feel that you're doing. I moved back to Columbia 6 years ago, this February, and was given the opportunity to become a part of the Richland 2 family, for which I've always been proud to say when asked where I worked. However, lately, the people I know are asking me a different question and that is, "What in the world are your people doing over there?" There's always something going on in the news about your district and it's not premier. I'm sorry, it's... As I watch and listen to the Board Meetings, especially the last Board Meeting, I was discouraged and embarrassed by the behavior of some of the members. The things that I saw, and none of it was edifying for the students or the community. Business is not being handled because of wasted time on personal agendas, personal vendettas, and personal attacks, character assassination, and it brings you to tears and it's very heartbreaking. I have seen a constant sowing of discord, disunity, disruption, distrust, and mainly disrespect and it is spilling over to the persons who are applauded for their presence. Be very, very careful. We forget that when seeds are planted, there will eventually be a harvest. I know this is true because none of us expected to witness what we saw that horrible day in January at our nation's Capitol. But it did and it was because of a seed that was sown. And now the same spirit is finding its way to our schools and to our house here at R2I2. Especially on Board Meeting days and the day after. You can see the shift in the atmosphere. My coworker and I have been cursed out, called out of our names, and threatened by that same spirit of disrespect. My mother taught us that if you disrespect your own house, then don't expect others to expect, to respect your house either. So I'm simply here today to say, "Please stop. Take a step back, move beyond yourselves, and get back to the business for which each of you were elected." My husband is a deacon and the one thing he learned, when you, when the majority votes, when you come out of a deacons meeting, you are united front. You don't go to the congregation with... You don't go to the congregation with what you didn't win. You are silent.
Thank you.
Time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have Mr. Joe Trapp.
Good evening, everyone. Critical race theory is not allowed in South Carolina schools. Schools are prohibited to teach, quote, "An individual by virtue of their race or sex is inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously," end quote. Richland School District Two does not openly teach this. I can't imagine anyone would. There is an open letter dated June 8th, 2020, on the school's website that might challenge that belief. It reads in part, quote, "The Richland Two family is grieving for yet another black life lost at the hands of police brutality," end quote. The letter adds that there is, quote, "A long list of names of black men and women who are the victims of police brutality and social injustice," end quote. The letter also states that we are, quote, "We are hurt, sad, angry. We have to call out injustice. Hundreds of years of abduction, enslavement, segregation, discrimination, based on the dark color of a person's skin, have created generational trauma. We acknowledge that racism has been and still is alive and is used in our community," end quote. It spells out quite clearly that racism exists and who the victims are. Who are the racist oppressors? The letter addresses that, too. The letter says it is, quote, "Unfair to judge everyone with a broad brush and declare that all white people are racist," end quote. Notice the word "all." It is unfair to say "all" are racist. Is it fair to say "a few" or "many"? What will we do about these racist people? A plan, there's a plan for that, too. Quote, "We will move forward with drafting an anti-racism policy to make plain our commitment against racism, or racist acts, practices, and procedures. We will increase training and professional development of all our staff," end quote. So we have our victims, we have our villains, and we have a plan to increase training to eliminate racism in our schools. Can we really expect the author of this letter to be non-biased and impartial? Is this the type of person we want to train our teachers? It's worth noting the author does train our teachers, and we will be taught tonight the difference between critical race theory and culturally relevant teaching by her. I don't believe we need the views expressed in this letter in our school district. I would ask the board to reboot this letter from the website. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have Mary Livermore.
Can I take my mask off?
Yes.
So I can speak? Okay. I was given this letter from a former Christian educator of District Two, who is no longer with you. To the Christian educator who know deep in your hearts that you are being forced to facilitate ideology, not only in your teaching, but also in your procedural norms through hallways, cafeteria, clubs, activities. Ideology that is in direct opposition of Christian morals and values. Ideology that leaves moreover their purpose in life. Ideology that initially destroys the nuclear family. Please know that we are praying for your strength as you personally are silenced. We know your silence is from a fear of protecting your family and your welfare. We pray that you understand the power of the only one and true living God and that you call on His strength as you face an anti-Christian arena masked as one that is so. In the name of tolerance, look deep. To the local Christian leader, it is time for you to protect your people. Please give them forum to discuss what they, what they are seeing in their students and support and pray with them through the, these conversations. The darkness and the confusion is strategic. If you try to fight alone, they will be targeted and ostracized. Listen to what your youth are talking about. Be willing to risk your so-called popularity in the name of protecting Jesus's children. And it goes on to say, "To the Christian student, we want you to know that your voice by law cannot be silenced. It is not illegal for you to talk about Jesus in public schools. The public schools cannot indoctrinate any religion, but know you as a student can still bring Jesus into your realm. You know that you too are silenced in fear, but that does not mean that you have to adopt ideology that stands in direct opposition of what you have learned from the Holy Bible. We know that you do not have a safe place in public school to share your voice as you would be academically punished and ostracized. Please know that we are praying for your protection and strength to guard your heart against all evil." I have a question. Why would someone not want to stand up here and say who they are? That's not a good sign in my eyes. That's, that's a teacher who's afraid, and there's many more that have spoke out and said that. That's concerning. That concerns me, that I had to stand here on behalf of a teacher who quit your district, and many more have. Statistically, I bet if we looked it up, people that have left, children and teachers, this isn't good. We're not going in a good direction for our children.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Next, we have Julie Weaver.
Is it working? Can you hear me? I know you couldn't hear her. Am I, do I have it right? Okay, all right. Thank you. Got, I can take my mask off, right? Yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, I haven't started yet. I haven't started.
Give her just a second. We restarted for you.
Okay, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
I gotta get my glasses on.
That's okay. We're good.
All right, thank y'all.
You're welcome. Are you ready?
Yes, ma'am. I'm ready. Thank you. I don't have the clock. That's why I haven't started.
Oh, okay. Tim, you ready?
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right, so now, here we go. "Good evening. I'm here to speak to you on a, uh, from a former Christian educator. This educator was with your district for over a decade. There's some alarming things that parents need to be aware of, and you as board members who were elected to your position need to look into. So board, boards and parents, you need to review the curriculum that the children are being taught. The curriculum pacing guides are planned well in advance, in advance before the school year. You, the parents, are entitled to know what will be taught to your student. If all parents ask in unison, then no one child will be targeted. Hence, a parent asks at this person's place, and the child became targeted. Ask in unison, parents. To the parents, the institution and district is very effective at keeping you out of its classrooms and in the dark about the district's ideology curriculum. Please set a time to purposefully listen to your children every evening. Intentionally help them with their homework to uncover the ideologies being taught. Authors and writers are very crafty with thematically integrating ideology concepts that are against your Christian faith. Parents, you must look carefully to find these ideology concepts that are subtly placed into your students' work. These are topics that you will not want your children to learn. They are counter to your Christianity. Parents, sadly, the staff and teachers have and are becoming more indoctrinated by the elitist of this district, who believe that it is the district's civic responsibility to inform your children of what the district believes to be culturally relevant topics with this ideology. You need to know, the department leaders will not allow you to opt your child out when you disagree with this curriculum. I urge you to resist this force. Your children don't understand. Your children are being desensitized, and they do not understand that they are being indoctrinated. Parents, now that you are speaking, and now that you are shedding light on this deception, know that the district will go to further extents to cover it up. Parents, please, prepare yourself in prayer now so you don't grow weary. Board members, it's been said tonight, you were elected to protect the children and not to allow the children to become indoctrinated. You failed. You need to become engaged now, more than ever, and go to the frontline staff and teachers unaccompanied by the King and his entourage. And that was a former educator that could not come in here to speak. And again, I agree with Ms. Livermore. It's a shame that I had to read her words and the fear that she feels from this district.
Okay, thank you. We'll have Mr. Smalls now, please.
I read an article about one of your subjects, O King, being called out for misconduct against a parent in a parking lot. The article gave, of course, a brief summary of the interaction. One thing I noticed, there was no response or comment from the King himself. Why? Subjects, why are you allowing the King to run the board? It's your reputation that's on the line, not his. When some of you are replaced, he will still be there. And when he has advanced his political career, he is not going to ruin his reputation for you. I charge you to restore order back to the board. That's why you were called. That's where your vested authority came from, us. Although many of you may be impressed by his perceived ability to raise funds for the district, District Two does not need additional funds to carry out duties. What the district needs are industrious and committed administrators, teachers, and support staff whose sole duty is to educate our children only. Your ability to raise funds is not that impressive, state or federal, if it's coming from the same source, the taxpayer. Filling money buckets don't fill empty heads. It was also said that the King discourages board members from visiting local schools. Let me read something to you, board members. Section fifty-nine dash nineteen dash ninety, General Powers and Duties of School Trustees. Number six, visit schools. Visit the public schools within its district from time to time, and at least once every school term, and take care that they are conducted according to law and with the utmost efficiency. That means to the greatest extent or degree. This does not mean to showboat, being theatrical, or flamboyant. It means taking the necessary steps to ensure that administration, teachers, and support staff is operating legally and efficiently at that particular school. Where's the oversight? And finally, King, for you to make such a hefty salary, where does District Two rank out of eighty districts in South Carolina? Academically, District Two is not even in the top fifty. All hail the King.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Ann Adams.
Good evening. My husband and I have three children. We are educating my older two children through a combination of homeschooling and private school. My son, who is in kindergarten, attends a Richland Two magnet school. We are having a wonderful experience there, and let me be very clear, there are no concerning issues at our school. I am speaking about the governor's request for a systemic review of all possibly inappropriate materials in state schools prompted by the presence of the book, Gender Queer: A Memoir, in the Fort Mill schools. I do not believe the book was found in any Richland County schools. I saw on social media the outrage of many teachers, librarians, and members of the public about the governor's actions. Some of those people might be in this room, or they might be watching this meeting virtually. They made comments and issued statements saying, in effect, that librarians were trained professionals, and they use their education to decide which books were appropriate for children, and that government, Governor McMaster is using his power to unjustly discriminate, against transgender youth who need such books. I ask everyone who shares such concerns, have you read the book? I got this book on Kindle to determine the truth for myself, and I was absolutely horrified by the illustrations that depict various sex acts. Just a brief examination of this book would tell any person that should not be in the schools or available to anyone under age eighteen. I would be equally disgusted by the presence of this book in a school library if it, if it depicted heterosexual acts. It belongs in an adult bookstore. This is not about transphobia or censorship. This is about the sexualization of our children and a complete lack of judgment by anyone who puts this book in the schools. The very idea that a school employee can decide that my underage teen should look at this book and then provide it to him or her without parental permission is absolutely abhorrent. It doesn't matter if it is about trans behavior or heterosexual behavior. This book contains multiple graphic images of sex acts. I want to continue to send my child to public school. I have every expectation that he, like his sisters, will go on to be a good, good student with high test scores that teachers like to have in class. However, if the public schools continue to push acceptance of and experimentation with trans or homosexual behavior on my child, or provide him with graphic images of sex acts because the professionally trained educators have decided that they can push their morals on my child, I will not hesitate to remove him. I can homeschool him, or I can put him in private school. I am privileged to have options about his education, and I do not have to stay and endure the aftermath of the latest professional training done by people with a political agenda. Many people have no options besides public school, but they do not want such things imposed on their children either. Please protect the innocence of our children and respect the morals of our parent, of their parents. Reevaluate the books in school libraries.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Steve Newsom.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Davis, thank you for the opportunity to speak. As a Richland Two staff member, thank you for the mask requirement, which has helped greatly with both student and staff safety, and has really helped with behavior, too, because before, we were trying to work with inconsistent procedures throughout the state. And I appreciate that we're basing our, our guidance on the best medical advice. And I also thank the district for calling out injustice, including racial injustice. To put it positively, we have unprecedented attention on our public schools at this moment. And I hope that those in this room and those following at home who are invested in public education will consider pouring that passion into our widespread, across the state and nation, staffing issues. Teachers and school staff, more than any other year in my fifteen-year career, need your help and support. So it's good to see that there is so much eyes on us right now. At more than one district high school, we're seeing as many as twenty absences on an average day, some due to permanent vacancies that can't be filled, others due to higher-than-average sick days. At one school, teachers and staff have already collectively covered over six hundred classes, class periods which could not be filled by subs this year. This is more covered class periods in a single semester than most schools see in an entire year. This means over six hundred lost planning periods without which teachers have to work longer and longer hours to complete the same work. Teachers and staff members are also missing valuable training and professional development that would normally take place during these classes. At some elementary schools, teaching assistants are subbing for other classes on a daily basis in addition to their other full-time duties. I'm very grateful to efforts my own administration and other school administrators are taking to reduce the number of class periods teachers and staff are covering each day, including taking over coverage themselves and finding ways to equitably share the burden. But needless to say, this is an unprecedented amount of work for all of us. But needless to say, this is an unprecedented amount of work for all of us. To concerned community members and district employees who are able to come into our schools to sub, I would ask you to please sign up. It's also a great way to know what's going on in the schools. And to district officials and board members, I would ask that you consider additional compensation for our subs and for staff members who are, in effect, acting as subs in the course of their regular workdays. Thank you very much for your service and leadership, and have a good night.
Thank you very much. We'll have now Michael Forzina.
I'm not going to read my prepared remarks, because in listening to everybody else speak, I feel compelled to just speak extemporaneously. In looking at the variety of policies for the board, I don't need to be redundant that it appears that there are many folks who are concerned about the board's ability to function and carry out its fiduciary responsibilities in a way that's conducive to creating unity and harmony in a community. So what I feel compelled to ask the board this evening is, have you listened to what people have said? Not just listen to the words, but are you empathic to what they said? Do you have compassion for what they said? This last fellow that spoke is a teacher, having spent nearly forty-five years in health care and looking at the health care industry that I still work in and serve, and seeing the labor and the stress and the tension of people trying to provide care. And I think about how that's transferred to the school systems and teachers who are with limited resources, working extra hours, and getting so little of just menial support to the emotional stress of their lives. And then I listened to the tension in this room tonight. I wonder why we have so many uniformed police officers here. I spent twenty-two years United States military, and I feel safer in this room at a school board meeting than I did on four deployments. And I have to ask myself, why? What's the threat? What's the threat analysis? I had to manage threat analysis as a medical operations planner. And so I ask, what's the threat analysis? What's the fear? Why the tension? Where is the lack of the fundamental responsibility of this board to create harmony in community relations and to listen openly and objectively without your own biases, which I know is very hard to do? I have trained boards on their responsibilities and following parliamentary procedures. And I'm not going to make any comments to that or anything specific to the board's conduct, both from a parliamentary matter, which is lapsing, your fulfillment of your policy requirements to have training and have that training documented, self-assessment on the board's practices that are required to be published at the next board meeting from your self-assessment. I'm just now just totally perplexed at what has brought us to this point as human beings in a community who share an equal fundamental goal in the education of children. My three adult children graduated from this district. I have six grandchildren in this district. This is the first board meeting I've come to, living twenty-nine years in this community. And I came here because I want to know why, what has brought us to this point of the lack of unity and harmony and consistency in working together in a common goal for the education of children? Not the indoctrination, not social agendas, not political agendas, but education with unity and harmony and respect for all. Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Actually, it's Burdette Gollman.
I'm sorry, Burdette Gollman. I did say Bernadette. I apologize. You're clearly not Bernadette.
All right. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Davis, as a physician, former teacher, a voter, and a taxpayer, who's lived in this district for forty years or more, and whose adult child graduated from Spring Valley High School, I want to commend Dr. Davis for all he's done, especially for the mask mandate and taking care of our children. Cancel culture is alive and well. Although it has existed for centuries and seem to be weakening, it's thriving in today's world. There's a new indefinite effort to further suppress the truth and accuracy in the recounting of American history. This is the epitome of white privilege. How dare anyone legislate the memory of my people's lived experiences? How dare anyone tell me how I should feel about my people's experiences? How dare you say that your hurt feelings are more important than what was done to my people in the land of the free and the home of the brave? How dare you change and ignore truthful history? An argument can be made as regards the real intent of this ignorant truth-bashing of the new boogeyman, critical race theory. Whether it's unification to win elections, distraction from what's really being done, sincere, genuine denial of truth, or maybe a mass personality disorder, narcissistic and sociopathic, or might be fueled by fear of being a minority and having things done to them that they did the other fold. Ironically, most people who demonize critical race theory don't even know what it is. They subscribe to this modern-day book-burning and personalize any objection to this delusional censorship, which smacks to me of racists calling people racist for calling out racism. This is not new. Anyone who studies Reconstruction, especially the end of Reconstruction, will see familiar themes. This is what the perpetrators are trying to hide. They don't want any of us to connect the dots. There's a relatively new field of study called agnotology, which is the study of inducing ignorance. This debate is a prime example of attempting to induce ignorance. As had been said, CRT is a legal theory that holds racism, or I don't like white supremacy, I call it white narcissistic pseudo-supremacy, is institutionally ingrained in the American fabric. When we consider all the racial disparities in criminal justice, housing, health, education, income, and wealth, not to recognize racism in these numbers is to accuse the victims of being inferior, and we know or should know that ain't right. This attack is an attack on our public schools, which in South Carolina were instituted by a predominantly black legislature.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker for the evening will be Gus Philpott.
Good evening. My name is Gus Philpott. Members of the board, Superintendent Davis, I have a comment on item ten point five on tonight's agenda. Trustee Agostini requested a presentation to the board on the recent in-service training on the difference between critical race theory and culturally relevant teaching. I'm sure all of you have read closely and studied the presentation that is attached to tonight's agenda. If you did, you already know what's in the twenty-eight PowerPoint pages. The public also has had the opportunity to view the presentation. I'm sorry, I'm interrupting Dr. Caution Parker. She must have some very important business. Slide eleven of the presentation mentions critical race theory without describing what it is or what its components are. The quotes on slide eleven, and they are quotes, are correctly footnoted. There was an article in the May Education Week titled, "What Is Critical Race Theory and Why Is It Under Attack?" In part, the author wrote, "To an extent, the term 'critical race theory' is now cited as the basis of all diversity and inclusion efforts, regardless of how much it's actually informed those programs." Chief Justice John Roberts' opinion in a two thousand and seven U.S. Supreme Court decision, a school case assignment, a case, said, "The way to stop discrimination on the basis of race is to stop discriminating on the basis of race." Critical race theory is not a synonym for culturally relevant teaching. Slide eighteen finally states, as was stated at a previous board meeting, "Richland Two does not teach critical race theory." I think that was stated after the request was made to have the in-service training. The in-service training was addressed to staff. Tonight, please ask the questions. Instead of listening to a twenty-eight-page presentation read to you, ask questions such as, what are the differences, if any, between critical race theory and culturally relevant teaching? What are the titles of the breakout sessions of that in-service training? Were those sessions recorded? Where can you, in the public, view the videos that staff members were required to watch? Will you put them on the district's website where they can easily be found? Anti-racism is a popular word today. Isn't everybody against racism? You should read, stamped by Imran Kendi. Try to read it. I got to page three before I closed the book.
Thank you. At this time, that ends our public participation. We will now move on to seven point one, student appeals. Mr. Manning.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that students number one and number two attend Blythewood Academy. Student number three, Blythewood with Lareda. Student number six, Blythewood with Lareda. Students number seven and eight deny the appeals.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
A second? Is that you, Ms. Agostini?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm just seconded by Ms. Agostini. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Yeah, I'll just, you want me to start at the top to make sure you have it all? Okay, students one and two, Blythewood Academy. Student three, Blythewood with Lareda. Student number six, Blythewood with Lareda. And then student seven and eight deny the appeals.
Mr. Manning, when it appears, can you review to make sure it's correct?
Yes, ma'am. I'll do that.
Thank you.
Seven and eight is deny the appeal. Madam Chair, if I can have a point of privilege while we're letting that come up to recognize Representative Ivory Thigpen, who entered the room earlier?
Okay, certainly, Mr. Manning.
Ma'am?
Certainly.
Yeah. Just want to recognize Ivory Thigpen. Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you, Representative Thigpen. I can't tell which one you are with all of them. I can't tell which one. But thank you for coming.
All right. Students one and two, Blythewood Academy, three and six, with Lareda, seven and eight, deny the appeal. That is correct, Madam Chair.
It's correct, Mr. Manning?
That is correct.
Okay. I believe you already seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. We do it electronically. Motion passes seven zero. Okay?
Madam Chair, student number four, deny the appeal.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we'll take the vote. Motion passes six to one.
Madam Chair, student number five, return to homeschool under strict probation.
Okay. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Is the motion correct, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes seven to zero.
That concludes the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. We will now move on to eight point one, approval of the revision of policy GCCAF, Professional Staff Academic Leave. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Davis, we are with the revision of the policy on our last board meeting, and we're asking for the approval for the revision of policy GCCAF, Professional Staff Academic Leave.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the approval of GCCAF?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve policy GCCAF as presented by district administration.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have several seconds. I'll take Ms. Mackey. I heard you first. Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll take the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to nine point one, approval proposal of SCSBA resolutions. Action requested, Dr. Davis.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a recommendation for you to approve the proposed School Board Association's resolutions as outlined in the public content.
Okay. Do I have a motion for approval of SCSBA resolutions?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the South Carolina School Boards Association resolutions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Any discussion? Ms. Agostini?
Yes, I would like to state for the record, I won't be supporting this because I have several issues. First of all, just again for public record, I do not support the slate for our president, not in agreement with number two, board legal action, not in agreement with number twenty-six, school governance takeover, excuse me, school governance takeovers, and then also the tax credit, number thirty-two. And then want to point out for number twelve, while I support it for fiscal autonomy, while we rely on our county, it's interesting that we ran to our county council to get approval or their support for the face mask policy, yet we want to remove them from approving our budget, so.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Note it for the record. Any other discussion?
If I can speak to number twelve, please.
Ms. Mackey.
The reason that resolution number twelve, which is about fiscal autonomy and affairs, proposed to delete the removal of the local board fiscal authority...
proposed to delete the removal of the local board fiscal authority language, which is no longer applicable with the passage of Senate Bill two oh one in twenty twenty-one. The new law dissolves local school boards and just declared it a state of education emergency. That was of one. With regard to the county, I don't think anyone was running to the county regarding that. The county makes the decisions that they make of their own volition any more than I would want to say people are running to us to make us make the decisions that we make. People make the decisions that they make based on the information that they have, and that's their choice. The reason that the South Carolina School Boards Association is asking that local school boards have fiscal autonomy is so that you are not dependent or reliant upon outside agencies for your financial funding. And so it's a matter of each local district being able to do what is the best interest of their school district.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Noted for the record. Any other, any other additional discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Madam Chair, while we're waiting for the vote, did you want me to speak to the NSBA matter here or at another time? I know Mr. Manning asked that I speak on that. I can do that whenever you're ready for me to do that.
I think it would be appropriate after we call for, after we do the number, then you can speak on it. Ms. Mackey, please. Okay, motion passes six to one. Okay, at this time, are you asking for a point of privilege, Ms. Mackey?
I'm happy to do that, yes.
Okay. Granted.
Everyone else has left the call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess I'll start currently instead of working backwards. And if anyone has any questions, they're welcome to ask me with regard to NSBA and their involvement in school boards and how they think that safety measures and things of that nature should have been handled. They were met with a great deal of scrutiny. And I'm simply going to read to you the letter that our exec, that the S C S B A executive letter director sent on November eighth. And if anyone has any questions from there, I'm happy to entertain any questions. It says, Dear valued S C S B A member, on Friday, November fifth, the South Carolina School Boards Association Board of Directors held a special call board meeting to receive a briefing and to consider and review the timeline of events and discuss the resulting impact of our state at present and in the future in relation to the National School Boards Association September twenty-ninth letter. After careful deliberation, the board voted to withdraw S C S B A's membership from NSBA effective immediately and request a refund of S C S B A's two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two membership dues. The decision was not made lightly. Over the past few weeks, S C S B A leadership has carefully monitored NSBA's actions, advocating and watching for a clear path forward and affirmative steps to address the damage done in relation to NSBA's September twenty-ninth letter to President Joe Biden. S C S B A has kept you, our members, informed regarding our ongoing concerns with it, with the letter. Aside from an October twenty-seventh letter of apology to state associations, NSBA has made few steps to mitigate the negative impact of the letter on many states, including South Carolina. On the whole, the board felt it was in the best interest of S C S B A's membership to sever ties with the NSBA at this time. Please note that our separation from NSBA will not have an impact on the state-level services and trainings that you as school board members rely on. And the staff will continue to provide first-class offerings with a focus on local control and local decision-making.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Okay. All right, moving on, the, the vote was six to one passes. We're going on to ten point. No, I'm sorry, we're going to ten point one report superintendent highlights. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, to our community members and public that are in attendance with us this afternoon, this evening, to those that are watching, good evening to you all. It's always my honor and privilege to share the superintendent's highlights at our board meeting, so I'll get started. And in the spirit of doing things the premier way, my highlights are organized around our four core values. And I'll begin with learning, which is the cornerstone of all that we do in Richland two. Our district received a highly complimentary exit report from Cognia following a three-day virtual accreditation visit. Cognia is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization staffed by the largest community of education, education professionals in the world. This organization conducts rigorous reviews of schools and school systems to ensure that all learners realize their full potential. A team of six evaluators assessed the district against Cognia high standards in three areas: leadership capacity, learning capacity, and resource capacity. There were six general findings in the exit report on which at least one had to be an area of improvement. More details about each of the six findings will be written in a written report provided to the district, district in approximately thirty days. The report will include an overall index of education quality score and ratings for each standard. The Cognia accreditation team had virtual conversations and conducted interviews with three hundred and twelve people, including teachers, students, administrators, board members, support staff, parents, and community partners. I'm very appreciative of everyone in Richland, in the Richland two family who participated in this accreditation process and for your continued support of our school. The premier learning experiences available in Richland two will be on display at the upcoming Virtual Choice Fair featuring magnet programs. Students and parents will learn about schools and programs in a virtual exhibition hall. Parents should note that the R two virtual school is now a choice option for middle and high school students. Information will also be available for district programs, excuse me, such as the R two I two Student Innovation Center and the Richland two Abbott Early College. An informational video on how to navigate the online choice application will also be available. The Virtual Choice Fair is November the thirtieth for elementary schools and December first for middle and high schools from five to seven P M. each day. Visit the Richland two website to register. The Choice One application window opens on December thirteenth and closes on January the twenty-sixth. Students at Ridgeview High School are providing a special learning opportunity for their community. The Anne Frank Traveling Exhibition exhibit is on display at the school. Matthew Tenny, a teacher cadet instructor and advisor, was instrumental in bringing the exhibit to the school after visiting the Anne Frank Center at the University of South Carolina. Teacher cadets are learning to, learning to be tour guides for the traveling exhibit and will share their knowledge with all visitors, but must, but most importantly, with young people in a way that adults cannot. Moving on to highlights in the area of community. I want to update the Richland two family on our school enrollment. The South Carolina Department of Education requires school districts to submit average daily attendance reports at designated times during the school year, with the first being on the forty-fifth day of school. Our average daily membership based on the forty-fifth day of this school year is twenty-seven thousand five hundred and nine students in kindergarten through twelfth grade. Last year daily, last year's forty-five day A D M. was twenty-seven thousand fifty-one students. Later this week, five members of the Richland two family will be honored by the Richland two Education Foundation at the Order of the Flame Ceremony. Established in twenty eighteen, the Order of the Flame recognized graduates, former employees, and friends of Rich, of Richland two who have enriched the lives of others through their contributions of time, talent, and resources. This year's honorees are former students London Harrell and Justice, Justice Stewart, former superintendent Dr. Stephen Hefner, former school board member Calvin Chip Jackson, and Dr. Sharon Button O'Keefe, a former principal. The wardies were nominated by members of the community. Now for some good community news for district taxpayers. You may recall that the bond, that the board approved a bond refunding resolution at the October twelfth board meeting. The district recently finalized the bond refunding that resulted in the savings of two point seven million dollars. The district has estimated that the savings would be two point two million, but interest rates moved a little more favorably before closing to generate savings above the October estimate. I recently had the pleasure of meeting with the superintendent's health advisory committee, which is made up of individuals who volunteer their time to provide a variety of health and medical-related guidance to our district. We greatly appreciate their generous service. At the meeting held last week, the group, which included multiple pediatricians, infectious disease doctors, nurses, and mental health counselors, discussed the district's mask requirement. The consensus of the group was that our district should keep the mask requirement in place and perhaps evaluate the possibility of removing the requirement after the winter holidays and cold and flu season. At this point in time, the district plans to keep the mask requirement in effect through the upcoming months while there is the potential for a high of substantial transmission. Once we get through the time period and if Richland County is no longer in substantial or high transmission, district administrators will consult with local medical experts and officials and determine our best course of action as well as updating and informing our board and community. To provide them, to prepare for making changes to health and safety protocols in the coming month, the district will also receive public input. Parents should be on the lookout for a survey to come out the week after Thanksgiving break. And we are recommending a public input section, input session be on the agenda for the December fourteenth board meeting. Our community may recall that we took similar steps in July and August to hear from parents, from partners, and that this is a requirement for receiving elementary and secondary school emergency relief or S three funding. For the character portion of my report, I want to highlight our season of gratitude. Richland School District two is celebrating, celebrating a season of gratitude, beginning with November first and running until winter break. Each week, we focus on the different aspects of gratitude, and we are asking everyone to participate. Please share your thoughts, stories, and pictures with us on your favorite social media outlets using the hashtag gratefully noted. And I'll end my report tonight by sharing some joy. It's American Education Week, and Richland two is celebrating public education. Across the nation this week, people are honoring the individuals working to assure that every student receives a quality education. Thank you to each of the local restaurants and businesses who are offering Richland two educators discounts at their establishments this week. And thank you to everyone working to keep this school district operational in a premier way each and every day. Students and instructors at R two I two Student Innovation Center have won the twenty twenty-one Ibrahim Janash Ray Young Inventor Award for their success in preparing students to complete and compete in national innovation competitions that focus on STEM disciplines. You might remember that R two I two team developed and presented the COVID nineteen contact tracer for the twenty twenty-one SAM song for tomorrow, SAM song saw for tomorrow competition. They were a national finalist in this competition and received sixty-five thousand dollars in prize money. Congratulations to Ridgeview High School Principal Dr. Brenda Mack Foxworth, who is a finalist for the South Carolina Secondary Principal of the Year. The South Carolina Association of School Administrators made the announcement last Friday. She was interviewed today by a panel of business, community, and educational leaders. The selection of the, the selection of the winner is scheduled to be announced prior to December seventeenth. Longleaf Middle School's sixth grade special education teacher, Dale Phillips, is the November twenty twenty-one Rookie Teacher of the Year. Longleaf Principal Teresa Boyd nominated Ms. Phillips for the award, praising her for establishing a community in her classroom where students experience growth with celebration. The Rookie Teacher of the Block Award is sponsored by H and R Block. And congratulations to Blythewood High School Girls Golf Team on winning the Class Five A State Championship last month. This is the second time in three years that the Bengals won the state championship. This time topping Chapin High School. Team members include Blythewood students Elizabeth Manning, Manning, Paige Palucci, Ella Stalvi, and Maddie Love. Blythewood Middle School student Caroline Richardson and Caroline Hawkins, and Muller Road Middle School student Ina Shana, uh, Shanae. Wow, we have three middle schoolers on this golf team? That is awesome. So Blythewood is probably going to be in the running again. Hats off to those student athletes, head coach Jason Mickel, and assistant coach Brad Salter, and principal Matt Sherman. And last but not least, I end with a joyful reminder for all. Next week is Thanksgiving break, and students and teachers will enjoy the entire week of school, the entire week off of school this year. School offices will be closed the entire week. The district office will be open on Monday and Tuesday and close Wednesday through Friday. I wish a happy and enjoyable Thanksgiving break to the entire Richland two family. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, thank you, Dr. Davis. I do want to reiterate something, and I'm glad that you went ahead and brought that up. I think you and I had talked about making sure we do serve twenty-seven plus students in this district. And we serve their parents also. And a lot of times, we've been charged with saying that we're not listening to parents. We're not hearing what they're saying. But we can, we have to listen to all parents. We can't just listen to, there's an old saying, the squeaky wheel gets the oil. But when you have twenty-seven thousand students, the squeaky wheel cannot always get the oil. You have to consider the other ones who don't say anything or are unable to say anything at the time. So we, Dr. Davis and I talked, and I think it's very, thank you for adding that on there as we discussed, Dr. Davis, about the survey of the parents for the mask mandate. Because we don't want anyone to feel whether you agree with us or disagree with us, but we are here to service the whole district. But we are one district. We would do things respectfully. We would do things in the appropriate order. We will follow the, the CDC guidelines and DHEC guidelines, and we also take into consideration. But the key point is, is that we do hear you, we do listen, and we do act upon what we need to do. But at the end of the day, Dr. Davis is charged with keeping the safety of the twenty-seven thousand students, teachers, parents, custodial workers, bus drivers safe. And so I want to say to you again, thank you, Dr. Davis, for hearing us on that, and the board appreciates you for that. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I just want to make sure I pronounce the Muller Road student's name. Her name is Ina Shia. I think it's important that we say our student's name, so I hope I got it right, Ina. But congratulations to your team.
Thank you again, Dr. Davis. Moving on to ten point two policy revision, B I D. Board Member Compensation and Expense, Expenses, Dr. Davis.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have the policy before you regarding the board member compensation and expenses. This, this policy was asked to be placed on the board agenda for your discussion. You see the information presented to you in your board documents. And we'll have Doc, we'll have Ms. Carla Hawkins, our, our general counsel, present this information to you this evening. Ms. Call.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Dr. Holmes, members of the board. District Administration presents a draft revision to policy B I D. Board Member Compensation and Expenses. We recommend replacing the term monthly stipend with the term per diem allowance. The change in terminology will ensure the policy is consistent with the language in state statute fifty-nine one three fifty, which permits board members to receive a per diem for attendance at board meetings. We also recommend stipulating when the policy will go into effect. Typically, a policy goes into effect upon approval. Because of the financial nature of the policy, district administration recommends that if approved, the policy goes into effect January the first, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Thank you. Any question, any question, board members?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Agostini?
I have a question where it says in the second paragraph, no board member will exceed the allocated amount without the express approval of the majority of the board at a regular board meeting. But then it goes on to say, upon mutual consent, board members may share. So if, for example, I have used my amount and somebody else is willing to give it to me, do I need to get the majority vote?
You do, you do not unless the, unless that amount puts you over the entire board, the entire allocated amount for the entire board.
The total board budget.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other question, board members?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning?
Just a comment, not a statement. I just want to reiterate, this, this change does not in any way increase board compensation. It's rather just a change in the way it's distributed from annual, a monthly stipend to per diem. So it's based off our meeting attendance rather than actually compensation per month, which is what we receive now. But for the public's sake, I want to reiterate that there is no change to the compensation amounts.
Okay. Thank you, very valid point, Mr. Manning. Thank you very much. Any other, any other comments? Okay. Moving on to ten point, uh, thank you, I appreciate you. Thank you. Uh, moving on to ten point three report, first quarter discipline, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, to those in attendance and those viewing, we're going to have our first quarter discipline report. That report is going to be presented to us by Mr. Cleveland Smith, who is our Chief Pupil Services Officer. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Davis. I also have Dr. Vickery joining me this evening. We're going to present to you the first quarter discipline report. We've shared a lot of- We've shared a lot of the discipline data with you prior to this meeting, but I want to go ahead and give you a few highlights. The screen that you see there is the first quarter discipline data, this is our four-year trend. You see where it's highlighted for the twenty twenty-one year, that's when we were virtual with the pandemic last year, so you see what those numbers are there. You also see in regards to incidents for this year, twenty-one, twenty-two, we are down with incidents this year compared to nineteen twenty school year, but I wanted to go ahead and point that out to, to you at this time. And the next slide is pretty much the same slide that I have there. One thing that we took out here is we took out, as you can see on the screen, in level one, we took out the tardies. Tardies have represented a lot of the discipline over the past few years, so we wanted you to see what level one incidents will look like with that being removed. We aren't excusing the tardies or anything, but we want you to see what the difference that will look like. Next slide is going back with our suspensions and expulsions, with our in-school suspensions, as you can see, the numbers did go up this past, for this year, as well as our out-of-school suspensions. One piece with that is, and I want to go back for one second, with our level three infractions, those are the ones that really carry a recommendation for expulsion, the criminal acts with drug possession, things like that, a, as you can see, those numbers did go up. So that's one factor that could be part of those numbers going up. Also, not making an excuse for this or anything like that, but if we look at literature across the nation, we see that fights since we have been back in schools have gone up. They've gone up in Richland Two, just like they have in the state and across the country, as I said. And so, you know, we have been working with our schools, working in regards to that, but they have gone up, and that could be one of the indications there. But the number you're seeing there are the number of suspensions. This net screen here gives you the actual number of students. So the previous screen gave you students that were repeated, had repeated offenses with in-school and out-of-school suspension, but this number here is giving you the actual number of students. So that's unduplicated information there, so I wanted to share that with you. This slide here is illustration for the taught behavior infractions leading to recommendations for expulsion for the first quarter this year. The first quarter fights, though, as I said before, they were up, and this year, we had thirty-six fights during the first quarter. One piece of information I want to share with you is this, too. When we go back and look, starting in the eighteen, nineteen school year, for the first quarter, we had a little over thirty fights. When we went to the, the next year, which was the nineteen twenty year, we had about fifty-two fights during the first quarter, and this year, we had over a hundred fights. So again, fights is something that has gone up, and we had thirty-six. You also see that drug possessions were the next highest, and then we had drug uses also, and that was eleven. So all of those were over ten that we had for this time, this year. Want to shift gears a little bit, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Vickery. We want to talk about some of the strategies that we have been using to work with our schools and work with our students in looking at our data and addressing our data and putting in measures to bring those numbers down some, but we, some of the strategies we have, as you can see there, is MTSS. We also are resuming our restorative practices, want to talk a little bit about socio-emotional well-being, both with our adults as well as our students, and something we implemented this quarter, matter of fact, this month, prime time, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Vickery.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
You guys can be able to hear me with the mask on? Pretty good? Works? Okay, great. Mr. Smith said, this is important stuff to me because we really have to figure out how to address needs that students bring in, and I'm speaking for myself and Sean Super tonight because both of us work very closely with these kind of data, and our departments work very closely together under Mr. Smith's direction. In the MTSS arena, this means, remember, the multi-tiered system of supports that we put in place, which means that the, the system responds to student needs, it's driven by student needs and interventions, responses become more complicated as the student need increases. So the things we're doing in that area have to do with training teachers, both new teachers and veteran teachers. Our new teachers are experiencing across the course of this year, a training in what we call the six Rs of classroom management, relationships, routines, and reteach, relevance, resilience, restorative approaches, and responsive approaches. And a good number of our veteran teachers have also registered for this series of workshops, which goes across the course of the year. We're also working on fostering resilience for continuing teachers by using what we call restorative practices. Restorative practices are techniques that are designed to try to help people learn how to build relationships and work to set up things where we right wrongs, fix things that have happened, work on learning to apologize, to sometimes do conversations that restore relationships and things like that. And so we're doing trauma-informed practices and restorative practices training. We, we've completed training for fifty-nine administrators in the spring of twenty twenty-one, and fifty-three additional administrators are being trained this year, along with our secondary lead counselors. That'll be done very soon, those are scheduled now. We've also done something kind of novel this year, which is PD for our bus drivers on many of these same issues. We really want to emphasize the fact that teaching starts on the bus, and so we're using those same things that I just talked about in trainings with our bus drivers, including our new trainees for drivers. A lot of discipline problems seem to be related to bus behavior. We also have a number of teacher leads in selected schools that are working for SEW, social emotional wellness, leadership in those schools with other teachers, and we're piloting that in most of our middle schools and two high schools this year. We've also focused specifically on some social emotional wellness activities. One of them, I'll just try to explain briefly, is some training we that was inspired by Kara Thompson, who's our coordinator of Family Intervention Services. And we trained all of our Learning Support Services staff members in August on this series of things to both notice what's going on with you and with someone else in order to be able to calm yourself and help calm the other person. We call it notice, notice yourself, notice the other person, and then work to regulate the way both of you are feeling. It's a little bit simplified of what the training is, but it's, it's really powerful training, we've gotten very positive response. We trained all of our LSS people in August and September, offered it to teachers in October at in-service, and we also did the same thing with our Richland, Northeast Richland Ministerial Alliance, and just letting them know the kinds of things we're working on with staff, because adult skills are a real part of how we work on these skills with students. We also have the Richland Two Wellness Side, I think you guys have seen that. Our school counselors, actually, this workshop went on today, are being trained intensively this year in the American School Counseling Association's model, I always get those, that acronym confused a little bit, that really works on targeting your school counseling program for the specific needs that students and, and the school are showing, and we have our Attendance Matters campaign going on. In October of this year, we did our administration for the first time of the Whole Child Survey, which is a survey that students in grades four, six, seven, nine, and ten completed, and we're looking at that data right now to help us assess what student needs are around the district. And the last thing I'll talk about, this is not Amazon Prime, this is, this is like primetime on TV. We had this idea that, it's, it's a novel idea, it's sort of like office hours, you know, when you used to drop by your professor's office, or if you wanted some advice, you would just say, I need to ask you a question, and someone would drop in and chat with you about something. We're doing that virtually on primetime, and the people who are hosting it are our Learning Support Leadership Team. We have a couple of us on primetime, two different times of the week, and we invite our LSS staff members or administrators, drop in, you don't have to bring anything, you can have any question you want to about a student need or something that you think a teacher may be struggling with, just to try to help brainstorm about ideas. So we're on primetime twice a week right now, and we'll see, it's really been going pretty well.
It looks like no one else is going to join this call.
It's really been going pretty well, but we'll assess around the holidays and see if we'll continue it in the spring. So that's primetime, LSS on primetime. And I think that's the last one. Okay, question?
Okay. Thank you for a very informative report. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Ms. Mackey.
Just a comment, thank you for that presentation, I have much more to say than you have time to listen to me, but I'm so glad to, to see that you have expanded the scope of services for just mental health, you know, the SO, the SEO, at bus drivers and our, our mental health, there are a whole lot of people who feed into the process of making sure that students are educated. So I appreciate things like primetime, of course, but I appreciate all of the different avenues that you are employing to make sure that Richland Two as a body is working on, you know, social and emotional health, especially in the time of the pandemic, and I just, I appreciate that. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm just gonna say this, thank you for always including the bus drivers on that training, because we all know there's a national bus driver shortage, so if we can provide that training to help rate, rate, I'm sorry, I'm so tired tonight, help retain some of our bus drivers, so they won't leave because of the antics that sometime go on the bus, we are so pleased that you're doing that, that is very, very important. I've worked in a lot of districts, and that doesn't often happen, where training for bus drivers is a key event, so I'm glad that we're taking the initiative to do that, and it lets our bus drivers know that they are supported also, that they're not just out there on their own. So I, I really appreciate that aspect of what you have added to that. Thank you.
It was fun, Dave.
Was it fun?
Yeah. Our drivers were.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Manning.
I just want to comment, I also appreciate the effort, I mean, certainly the focus on discipline, the continued reports we receive, the work we're doing for preventative measures. I also, you know, I think it is reflective of what we're seeing across the country, the stressors for our teachers and our school staff, increased number of fights, the, the mental health issues that our students are suffering from that relay into the classroom and ultimately often end up on the shoulders of our teachers to handle, to be the first line of defense. In addition to the additional training that they're receiving, which is great, but also is a stressor in and of itself to the teachers, an additional workload, additional responsibility to manage the environment, and so I, I know district staff is looking now at measures that we can undertake to help reduce some of the stress and workload for teachers, and I appreciate Dr. Davis and your team for the, the work that's going. I think I saw an article in Charleston that was disturbing, we, I know I heard from the community about teachers leaving, that is not just a Richland Two issue, I, I think the statistics were staggering, over sixty-six percent of teachers in Charleston considered leaving at the end of the year, at one time or another, throughout the course of the year, it's, the, the profession is under fire, and, but, but ultimately, thank you for the, the work that we're doing in this area, it really is critical and important, so thank you. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, appreciate you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
I, I just had a couple of questions. What high schools are in the SO pilot program?
In the SEW, eh?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think I wrote that, coming out of Dr. Super's leadership. Do you remember?
I will go ahead and double check with Dr. Super to see which ones, I don't have that information, he was supposed to be here this evening, but he couldn't make it.
And then, do you have any information to share? I mean, we, we've talked about the fights, but can you give us any insight on why we've seen such an increase? And again, I realize it's nationally and statewide, too, but...
I can give you, and I'll give you a brief one, because I know I can go long. Briefly, we have had conversations with our high school principals, we just had that last week, and we asked them to give us some insight on what they're seeing about fights and what's causing fights and all, and there was, and Dr. Vickery was part of that, one of the pieces we got from them was that during the pandemic, you know, everybody was on, online, and everybody was, lack of a better way, hiding behind the computer screen and texting and Twitter and social media. Now, those same people who made some comments when they were hiding behind the screen, they have come out, and now they're interacting with people, and some of the comments that they made, so some of the issues that were brought on off-campus and in the community are now spilling over. So again, it's one of those pieces, as we have seen with the pandemic, people not treating people nicely, not being rude, crude to various people, that's part of what is leading to those fights when, when they get on campus, and the schools have looked at measures to put in place to try to look at the movement that, that goes on during the day as well as with the students, but that's part of what has carried over, things that used to be in the community last year with them not being on campus have started coming back on campus now since they are back, and they are seeing each other now.
There's one factor I'll mention, too, Agostini, which is that we're seeing, get to the mic. Oh, I'm sorry, of course, sure, I forgot. It said, high rate of students who are in ninth grade is one of the target years, because those students have not really had traditional middle school experiences since sixth grade. If you look at their middle school years, they had a complete year of sixth grade, then seventh grade was a different year, and eighth grade was a very, very different year. So we have some target years that we're also looking at, ninth and tenth graders more common than eleventh and twelfth graders, and also at times when there's movement around the school, they're having more trouble dealing with those things because of reduced experiences, and same thing Mr. Smith was saying, changes in the school routine.
Okay.
Those are some hints we have at this point.
Well, thank you, that was very informative. We're looking at areas to mitigate this, or, and I want to say, without, you know, increasing expectations on teachers somehow, we're looking to resolve this, or?
Yes, we are looking at the, we are looking at the data and have a communication with, with our principals and, and administrators at all levels to see what we can do to go ahead and bring that down, as well as other preventive measures that we can do, and with trainings that we can get done. Yes, we are.
Thank you. Okay. All right, thank you, Dr. Davis.
I, I want to first thank my team for, for a great presentation and for answering the questions. Those are good questions, but I, I, I just want to caution us, these are speculative responses to something we don't quite actually know why, and so we don't know for a reason why, we don't know the reason why there's an increase of fighting across the country in public schools, the same way we don't know why there's an increase of violence and, and more gunshot victims in Richland County right now. We are all trying to figure out... to figure out what's actually going on as relates to our, and we're speculating about what we think some of the conditions are. There are many factors that could be a contributor to this. One, of course, definitely is the social, emotional health and wellness of students. The other is the extreme amount of stress in society and a lot of pent-up frustrations. But we've not analyzed that. We've not interviewed students. We've not surveyed students. We've not done any of those things to come to a conclusion to say, these are the things. What are some of the steps that we're taking? I did ask Mr. Smith and his team to convene a disciplinary task force for us to look at discipline in the district. We were talking about this probably three, four weeks ago. We want to look at discipline in the school district, because we're hearing from some of the frustrations and the challenges, not only from our teachers and our bus drivers, but even from our parents as they're trying to deal with some of the changing behaviors or the behaviors of, of students. But there are many, many factors. We have a, a lot of young and inexperienced teachers in the teaching profession that are still learning. You, you talking about classroom management and classroom management skills, and you're talking about a pandemic. Well, we have teachers who may be in their third year of teaching, and they've not physically been in a classroom for an entire school year yet. And they're still learning how to be good classroom managers as a result of that. That's not to blame the teachers, but there will be requirements for us to be able to go back and train those individuals, particularly when you're bringing in 200 to 300 teachers, new teachers a year statewide. So, there are many factors that we need to, to examine and then extrapolate and then make some sort of inference based off of the information we have, to be able to determine where we need to focus our attention and provide our students with the proper educational experiences that they need in the, in the classrooms. And I think it's gonna take a combination and a collaborative effort of many things. It may be some policy may be required, some training's gonna be required, some collaboration's gonna be required, communication's gonna be required, partnerships are gonna be required, who can help us in the community as we are working with our students. So, there are a number of things that hopefully the discipline task force will be able to bring some recommendations back to administration to be able to address these concerns.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Davis. Thank you for that clarity. That was good to clarify all those mitigating factors that may come into play. We appreciate you, and thank you for a wonderful report. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're moving on to, let's see, 10.4, Student School Start Times. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board, and to our, our viewing public and the public in attendance. Again, I thank you all for sticking with us. I know this has been a, a, a marathon of a board member. Appreciate you hanging in here with us for this very important information. We've been working on school start times now for about five years. We've been looking at school start times in Richland two and five years, and we are ready to present to you all our final presentation of the school start times for the upcoming school year, so that we can stand ready to answer any questions or concerns that you may have regarding the start times of our schools moving forward. So, presenting this information for us this evening, we have Dr. Sabrina Suber, who's our Executive Director for Secondary Schools and Leadership, and Mr. Will Anderson, who is our Chief Operation and Logistics Officer. Dr. Suber, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Dr. Holmes, members of the board. Since the 2017-18 school year, district administration has been researching and evaluating school start times. This project started as a result of research published by the American Academy of Sleep Medicine and endorsed by the American Academy of Pediatrics. This project also came as a result of a pattern we saw a few years ago with late buses, particularly at the high school level. This is a one-page summary of the research. Please note that the complete handover literature review is included in your electronic packet. So, in summary, number one, teens often need more sleep than they actually get. Number two, sleep can affect academic performance. And number three, sleep can also affect health and behavior. In the 2018-19 school year, we administered a survey to parents and employees. These are four data points from the survey that was administered in 2019 to both parents and employees. Please note, the complete survey analysis is in your electronic packet. I'll call your attention to the last data point, where 47% of all respondents, that would include elementary, middle, and high parents and employees. They all felt that we should consider changing start times. There's almost a 50-50 split between that group and the 53% of respondents that did not feel we should consider changing start times. Student sleep and student safety were identified as the most significant factors when setting school start times. Another significant factor is bus transportation. The 2019-2020 school year, which was cut short by COVID, included a thorough review of the parent and employee survey data and a determination of next steps. Last school year, we presented some possible start time scenarios and conducted a series of partner input opportunities. The series included focus groups. Focus groups were conducted with middle and high school students, bus drivers, and community after-school care providers. Advisory councils. The presentation on school start times was shared during faculty advisory, classified staff advisory, and parent advisory meetings. The presentations were followed by an opportunity for feedback and dialogue on the topic. We also had community conversations. We conducted a series of five community conversations where parents, employees, and community members received information about the school start times project and were afforded the opportunity to give feedback. The outcome of the partner input opportunities was shared with the board at the May 2021 meeting as the three top trends that emerged from the feedback. This slide shows the most popular start time, oh, let me go back. Nope. The outcome of the partner input opportunities was shared, oh, I did that, with the board in the May 2021 meeting. I'm sorry. I'm reading the same thing twice.
It's okay.
There we go. This slide shows the most popular start time scenarios chosen by community So, where did we end in 2020-2021? At the end of the 2020-2021 school year, three decisions were made. To not make changes to start times for the 2021-2022 school year. To run transportation analysis on some of the start time scenarios based on suggestions shared in our partner input opportunities. And then lastly, if needed, to announce a decision regarding school start times in the fall of 2021 that would go into effect for the 2022-2023 school
Thank you, Dr. Suber. Good evening. So, what have we done since then, as Dr. Suber mentioned? We worked really hard on evaluating the, the start times that you saw in the, in the previous slide of really looking at how these would work with transportation. And we've run a lot of different scenarios. Taking those scenarios, we've realized that we did come to some solutions that could work, especially when we're fully staffed, that we feel very confident that we can make some changes and make those work. We also went back and reviewed all the information that Dr. Suber just mentioned with you, and really going back to the purpose of why we started this, that the research and start times for adolescents, that we really need to look at the research that's been presented and really look at what's best for those children. Some of the goals we had moving, move, when we started this back in 2017, 2018, was we need to move the middle school start time later. We need to make sure that our, based on the research, that our start times for middle and high school begin after 8:15. We heard from you all, we heard from the community, that nine o'clock's almost too late to start, needs to start before then for after, after school activities, athletics, et cetera. We also understand that needs to end before four, so that, so that they can get to those jobs and those other things. And we also, from transportation, anything less than 30 minutes in between times, we would not be successfully able to transport kids to get to school efficiently and on time. So, with that, we have, we have a beginning effective for the 2022-2023 school year. This will be our new school start times. You can see that elementary school will start at 7:20. It'll be 20 minutes earlier than they currently start, and ending 20 minutes earlier, ending at 2:30. Middle schools is the biggest change. So, we're going from a 7:30 start time to an 8:20 start time. Big change for middle school students, and then getting out at 3:15. And then our high school with a slight adjustment of 15 minutes later from 8:50 to 3:53. These start times are, go into effect in the 2022-2023 school year, and I'll talk more briefly in a minute about how we plan on communicating that. Just to let you all know, we've had, you know, questions come up with what other school districts do. On this screen, you can see what other districts do. We will be starting our elementary school the same time as Lexington One, the latest. You can see other school districts start, have been starting and starting earlier, or for these, for a long period of times. You can see that our, where our middle schools in, are at, they're right around the average, with a couple in, starting later, but that also they have their high schools starting earlier. And you can see where our high schools start. So, these other districts have been, have been a similar schedule with elementary starting earlier. Some things that we definitely need to consider as we move forward, as we implement this change is, it can be difficult at times, but some things we need to consider as we go through this process. Elementary kids take a long time to unload and load off a bus. Middle and high school, you get on, you get off, you kind of do your thing. And so, with elementary being first, we triple-tier our routes. It can, if we, if we have problems at elementary school, there's that ripple effect. So, we need to really make sure we work with our processes with our elementary schools and principals to make sure they understand that we need to have a, a really efficient, effective process of getting those students on and off the bus safely. We also need to make sure that our parents, we have a, a policy and procedure in place, so that parents understand that if you're not gonna be there to get your child, if you're a pre-K or K student, we need to come up with a procedure to make sure that at some point, you, you, you have to now drive your kid to school. That, that delay happens now, but being first could back a, more of a ripple effect. Right now, some of our schools' middle school bus loops are used as additional car rider lines when those buses leave. So, we're gonna need to make sure we work with our schools to be more efficient on our car rider lines and really work through that. State law does not allow buses and cars to coexist, to mix. They can once the buses are gone. So, that's gonna be a change. It's something we'll have to work with. There will be some dark times as the chain, as the, as the, as the mornings, the days are getting shorter. But as you saw in our neighboring districts, this happens and has been happening. We just have to make sure we work really hard on our parents to, to let them know about how to be safe at a bus stop. It could possibly see an aftercare, an increase in aftercare. We do know now that having the middle school kids not home first, there could be more elementary aftercare. But over, since we first, over the many, many years that we've changed the, that the schedule, the middle school's schedule went first, we've had a, a high increase in the number of aftercare opportunities for our children at elementary school. So, how we communicate this? This will start today with the, with the board meeting. We'll then do our mass messaging that, that Ms. Roof does with her team, with our principals' meetings. We'll work with them on these considerations that we need to make sure we work out. We'll let teachers know. One thing we heard last year, while we didn't implement it in 2021, 22, is they wanted to make decisions based on their contracts, based on what times they would start. So, all that information, we want to get it out before choice. Choice starts here in December. So, all this information will be rolled out. And again, here is the current schedule and our schedule for the 2022-2023 school year. With that, Dr. Suber and I, and Dr. Davis here will help us as well answer any questions y'all may have.
Okay. Thank you for a wonderful report. We appreciate that. Board members, any questions or comments?
Yes.
Question. Thank you all for the presentation and for the consideration about, you know, sleep. I know we've heard about this at conferences. I know for the last few years or so, it's important. I appreciate you all, all that you put into the presentation. Quick question. Well, back to Mr. Anderson, back to slide number 13, additional considerations. Talk to me about that. Are these things that, that could be potential issues going forward as we change start times, or are these things that you've considered to arrive at what we're recommending?
They could be issues that we're gonna have to work through. So, for, I, I don't have the number on me. I guess, is this the slide you're talking about?
That's it.
Okay. So, right now, Dent Middle School, for example, they use that second loop off of Trinum Road in addition to the loop on Decker. Well, now, they're gonna have, they're gonna primarily just have to use the Decker, because buses, they come in, they don't come in all at once. So, elementary school, now, all the middle schools stack in the morning, and they stack in the afternoon, and then once they're gone, they're gone. Well, now, they'll be able to do that at elementary school, but they won't, now they just kind of come in as they come in. So, there's gonna have to be some working on ensuring that we can have a really good process for the car rider loop. So, that's, those are things that are gonna be a ripple effect, or a, that's, because of us changing the start times. Not to say we can't do it. We just have to be prepared and be, work with our families and know, hey, come first to school next year. It's gonna look different, but it's always chaos in the first of the year. But we'll make sure, we're gonna work really hard over these next eight months to do all we can to be prepared and plan for that, and then we will adjust and, as we need to.
Thank you. That was my follow-up question, is making sure that we're getting, giving parents as much notice as possible, and that they have a way to, that they know who to contact or to call if they have any questions or concerns as we're feeling through those first few weeks or months, I imagine. But I appreciate that screen, particularly because you're taking into consideration student safety at the end of the day, and I appreciate that.
Yeah. We're, we tried to think of all the other things that could happen and be prepared and planned over the next few months.
And it's impossible to think of everything, I know.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
But thank you all so much.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Dr. Caution Parker?
Yes. Thank you. A great report. I think I probably mentioned before, this was something we've looked at back in the early 2000s about changing the time. And I do remember the time when elementary students were picked up first, back in the 80s and early 90s. And the issue was, you know, care after school. And that's when we switched and, and made sure that the middle school kids were picked up first and got to school first, so they could be home to help with the younger brothers and sisters when they returned from school. But, but now with all the wonderful programs we have in our elementary schools and some in our middle schools for children, for after-school care, it makes it a lot easier and a lot better. So, I'm glad to kind of see that we're gonna take steps in this direction. It's a great report. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Agostini?
And I thank you too for the presentation. So, the board is, my question is, Madam Chair, the board's not going to vote on this? This is an administrative decision?
As it stands, this right now is just the presentation, correct, Dr. Davis?
No, ma'am. This is, this is administration making the change to change the start time. According to board policy, ID, the school board, has the authority when it relates to the length of the day. Administration wanted to be transparent and share this information with the board. As I stated earlier, we've been having this discussion for about five years now. We've delayed this decision last year at the recommendation that we continue to get more input. We've come back with the same information and support for this move, and administration is ready to move forward with making the change to start time. As I, we've stated this for, I guess, many years now. We've known that middle school students are not getting the rest that they need, and that the science and the data supports a later start time for adolescents.
Okay. Thank you. I, I really appreciate, I see you tied in the brainstem learning research for this also, which is wonderful, because you're right. Time and the time that students start makes a difference in their learning ability. So, and I know this is a very long process to do this, three years. So, thank you for doing that and taking the time to make sure that the kids have the, the most opportunity to be ready when they come into school now. Thank you very much for your presentation. Okay? Any other board comments or questions? If not, we're gonna move on, please, to 10.5, Update Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, and to our, again, our viewing public and those of you who are in attendance this evening. We have Dr. Helen Grant, who's gonna come provide us with an update for diversity from the Office of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer. This presentation is regards to request to have a discussion or share information of a presentation that we did at an end service this summer, of the difference between critical race theory and culturally relevant teaching. Dr. Grant?
Thank you so much, Dr. Davis. Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Davis, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight for this presentation. As Dr. Davis said earlier, we're in a season of gratitude, and I am very grateful for this opportunity to share with you this evening. This is the third week of our season of gratitude, and we're sharing through appreciative inquiry, ideas, suggestions, initiatives, et cetera, that are working well in our school district. And so, this opportunity... And so this opportunity to talk about culturally relevant teaching is an idea that is working well in our school district, and I'm happy to share information with you about it. So our purpose tonight is to summarize the presentation that was made at our 2021 Back to School Administrative In-Service on the difference between critical race theory and culturally relevant teaching. And by way of background and context to understand how we got to this particular presentation, Richland Two has a long history of using culturally relevant teaching strategies, and it goes back to work from Dr. Gloria Latson Billings. And there are three main components of that. It is a focus on student learning and academic success, and so that's first, student learning and academic success. Then development of the student's cultural competence to help strengthen positive ethnic and social identities, and supporting the student's critical consciousness, it's like developing their ability to think critically. So those are the three pillars of Dr. Gloria Latson Billings' research and of culturally relevant teaching, excuse me. Our work has evolved to include equity, and under your wonderful leadership back in 2019, the board adopted our ACB equity policy. It was ACA, but the School Board Association changed the designation. The policy is the same. We believe that we were the first district in the state to develop an equity policy and adopt a equity policy. We adopted this policy, you did, before the model policy came out from the School Board Association. And so through this policy, we have taken your instructions and your policy guidance and understand the commitment to the success of every student and to the district's mission and vision, that equity of opportunity and equity of access to programs, services, and resources are critical to the success of every student and to the district's mission and vision. And also that the board is committed to ensuring students' identities do not predict nor predetermine their level of success in school. Along with other actions that have been taken in addition to the adoption of the equity policy, we have had three cohorts of teachers. Each school has been able to send representatives to the cohorts who have participated in classes here on-site without cost to them by Dr. Gloria Booty on culturally relevant teaching. This year's cohort will be the fourth cohort. Also, Richland Two is a district avid district, so that all of our schools are using the avid principles, and those principles are designed to close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college readiness and success in our global society. The district took your equity policy and developed an administrative rule that is used. It has eight components to it on what kinds of things the district should do, what we should be looking towards to determine whether or not our practices are equitable in the district. And the diagram that you see is just something to give a visual presentation of the administrative rule that goes with the equity policy. You could substitute any of the things that are in the administrative rule for the ones that are actually there on the graphic, but we have that on the website to be available. So anyone who's concerned about whether or not an initiative, a program, an activity will meet the requirements of our equity policy has a quick visual something to go to, to help them make that determination. And then more in terms of the context of this presentation. At the time of the in-service, which was right back at the beginning of the school year, even prior to that, various pieces of legislation had been introduced into our South Carolina legislature that spoke specifically to what kinds of subjects could be taught and how they should be taught. Those bills are still pending. They did not go through the full process in the first year of the two-year legislative session, but we knew that there was discussion about those that were in our community and in our state. There was a large amount of publicity nationwide and including here in South Carolina and in our community about whether or not K-12 schools were teaching critical race theory. So there was a lot of talk, a lot of discussion about that. At the time, we were thinking about what do we need to do for our administrators for back-to-school in-service. And then part of the purpose of our administrative back-to-school in-service is to help prepare those administrators, those principals and assistant principals, to be able to answer questions that may arise either from their own staff or from their community members, parents at their schools. And so our goal was to give them some tools to use to be able to answer some of these important questions. Two other things happened that are of important note leading up to the presentation. On June 3, 2021, our State Superintendent of Education, Ms. Molly Spearman, put a statement out about the position of the State Department of Education as it relates to critical race theory. And then on June 29, the State Department of Education sent out the new provisos that were a part of the General Appropriations Bill for 2021, and one of those provisos is a partisanship curriculum proviso. With that information, district staff got together to talk about what we thought would be important for administrators to know about. Collaborators on the presentation were Ms. Nancy Gregory, our Chief Academic Officer, Ms. Penelope Atkinson, our Executive Director of Secondary Instruction, Mr. Arthur Newton, Executive Director of Elementary Instruction, Ms. Elizabeth King, middle and high school social studies specialist, and me. And so we got together, talked about what we thought was important, actually put the presentation together, shared the presentation, made revisions and comments to it so that it would be ready to go forward. The actual presentation to administrators was one hour long. It was part of a two-day administrative back-to-school in-service, and it was one session that happened on the second day on that Thursday. The information that we stressed, that you may not see in every slide, but was stressed repeatedly during the presentation, was that we asked all of Richland Two not to use the acronym of CRT. It became evident to me as well as to my colleagues through some of the information we were receiving, through some emails and requests for information from the public, that there was some confusion about when Richland Two says CRT, what does that mean? And so we asked everyone that talk about culturally relevant teaching or culturally relevant pedagogy. If you're going to talk about critical race theory, say critical race theory, but we're not using the acronym of CRT to try to avoid any confusion by anyone with exactly what it is we meant here in Richland Two. Also, the second thing, we teach the standards provided by the State Department of Education. We don't decide the subject matter that's taught. We follow the standards of the State Department of Education. And so anytime an administrator is asked a question, well, what is it that you teach? We teach the standards as provided by the State Department of Education, and we do not teach critical race theory. Those were three reoccurring statements made over the course of the one-hour presentation that we had with our administrators. And so starting at this point in the presentation is a summary of the entire presentation. Again, the presentation was a full hour. I knew that I did not have a full hour this evening to share with you. I will say to you, though, that no substantive changes were made to what you have in front of you and what we will share this evening. Mainly title pages were taken out, maybe duplicative information was removed, but the substance of what was presented is what you have here tonight. Again, that original presentation was on July 22, 2021. Again, the facilitators, the same people who collaborated on the presentation were actually in the room during the presentation, helped to facilitate. So it was a group presentation with a group of facilitators, and that was especially helpful to answer questions that came up because each of us has different areas of expertise. And so having this group work together on this project, I think, really was beneficial for our administrators. I always start a presentation with just setting some rules, and we did that with this group because we needed our administrators to understand it's okay if you're not sure about critical race theory to ask questions. No one is going to look down on you if you ask questions. We will answer them to the best of our ability. If we don't know the answer, we'll try to find the answer and get it back to you. But these are the group norms that we observed during the presentation. Because we're an avid district, we had an essential question, and that essential question is what is the difference between culturally relevant teaching strategies and critical race theory? Critical race theory is a concept, it's an academic concept. It's not new, more than 40 years old. The core idea of it is that racism is a social construct, and it's not merely the product of individual bias or prejudice, but something embedded in legal systems and policies. I've had an opportunity to talk with some of my higher education friends to ask them about how they describe critical race theory, and one professor said to me, "My entire teaching career in higher ed has been working with educators on culturally relevant teaching. Critical race theory is a completely different subset of beliefs." And she said to me, "I would not even stand to try to give a true explanation of critical race theory because it requires study." Many times you find any critical race theory discussions on a master's or above level, a lot of the discussion happens in law school, in legal classes. It is not something that is taught, the theory, critical race theory is not taught in K-12 schools that I am aware of. It emerged out of a framework of a legal analysis in the late 1970s and early 1980s by Derek Bell, Kimberly Crenshaw, and Richard DeGauldo, among others. So what we did then in the presentation is to establish some common language so that we're all talking about the same thing. And so we had already said, we're not going to use the acronym of CRT, but let's talk about culturally relevant teaching. This is what we do in Richland Two. And this term was created by Gloria Latson Billings in 1994. It is a pedagogy that empowers students intellectually, socially, emotionally, and politically by using cultural reference to impart knowledge, skills, and attitudes. I like to describe it as meeting students where they are, learning where they are, and using the information they bring to the classroom to help them where they need to go. If you have a special interest in something, using that special interest that the student has as a way of saying, this is how we learn mathematics, or this is how the science works, using that cultural reference that is important to the student. It's also described as using the cultural knowledge, prior experiences, frames of reference, and performance styles of ethnically diverse students to make learning more relevant and effective. Another description is, a teacher who is responsive is so when she is able to mirror the ways students remember information in her instruction, using similar strategies to scaffold learning. Because we are an avid district, I look to our avid materials in particular, and I brought with me to the podium, avid has a particular strand that is culturally relevant, a schoolwide approach. And so I took the information from the avid strand to help describe culturally relevant teaching, what it is and what it requires educators to do. It's not, and this is avid saying this, "It's not a program or a few well-placed strategies. It's a process that involves knowing and teaching the whole child. Doing so requires 10 different strategies for teachers to use." I won't go through them all. I know that you can read and you've had access to them, but it includes fostering a growth mindset within themselves, the teachers, and with students, creating a learning environment that is safe, supportive, and respectful, embracing the importance of equity in meeting the needs of students. It also includes support through scaffolding and differentiation, consistently evaluating teaching practices and adopting a willingness to change in order to address the ways in which students learn, embracing learning and growth for themselves and for students. This is what avid says to us culturally relevant teaching is about. And so then we said to our administrators, here's what guidance we can give you right now, based on what's happening in our country, in our state right now, to help you answer questions that may arise as you come into this current school year. So the guidance that we give, Richland Two does not teach critical race theory. Critical race theory is taught in the upper levels of higher education, not in K-12 education. So Richland Two does not teach critical race theory. Richland Two does ask teachers to use culturally relevant teaching strategies because those strategies work for our students. So what we know, in South Carolina, both in Richland Two, we said to our administrators, we know that Ms. Spearman, the State Superintendent of Education, on June 3, 2021, issued a statement about critical race theory. That middle paragraph, she said, "Instead, we will focus on South Carolinas and our nation's storied history and teach the truth, the good and the bad, to our students so that they have a deep appreciation of what it means to be a South Carolinian and an American. We will help train educators so that they can identify with and support students from diverse backgrounds so that demographics do not dictate educational outcomes." In addition to Ms. Spearman's statement, we provided the administrators with the language of the partisanship curriculum proviso. The proviso language is long, and again, I'm not going to read all of it to you, but it tells us that there are eight things that the general appropriation, I'm sorry, it's getting late, eight things that the general appropriation funds may not be used to inculcate. And those eight things are listed. You see the first two on this slide, in number one and number two. You see the other six are listed on the second slide. These are things that the appropriation funds may not be used to do. And then the proviso ends with this statement. "Nothing contained herein shall be construed as prohibiting any professional development training for teachers related to issues of addressing unconscious bias within the context of teaching certain literary or historical concepts or issues related to the impacts of historical or past discriminatory policies." So in addition to Ms. Spearman's statement and the budget proviso, we reminded our administrators that we also have a board policy IMB that references teaching about controversial or sensitive issues, that the policy requires that anytime a sensitive or controversial topic is discussed, it must be free from bias or prejudice and must have fair representation of multiple perspectives. That is your board policy, and we reminded our administrators of that. And in the policy, there are steps that teachers and administrators go through anytime they believe something may be a sensitive or controversial topic so that it is vetted and approved to go forward with students. We also provided them the reference to the equity policy that we've already discussed this evening, policy ACB, our commitment to equity and the administrative rule. And with that, we ended the presentation. We had lots of questions and answers. How do you respond? What language do you use? And again, the encouragement to everyone is to be as clear and plain as possible that we do not teach critical race theory in our schools. We do use culturally relevant pedagogy and teaching strategies in the way we teach the standards from the State Department of Education. And so that is, Madam Chair, the summary of the presentation that was given at our administrative in-service. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Great presentation. Board, are there any questions or comments? Dr. Caution Parker?
Outstanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Deeply appreciated. I'm just sorry our audience left before your presentation, the ones that had the concerns. I'm sorry that they're not here to see and listen and see this for themselves. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Anybody else? Ms. Agostini? Do I come to you, Ms. Mackey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I agree with Dr. Caution Parker that I'm sorry that part of our audience left so that they weren't here to hear your presentation. What is the misconception, the most common misconception between the two?
I wish I could tell you, Ms. Agostini. I have to admit, some level of frustration that there seems to be a misconception that the two are the same because they are not the same, and so I don't feel like I can really explain that to you. I'm sorry.
No, and I appreciate that. That's why I wanted this presentation tonight, because there seems to be, to me, out in the community, people thinking that the critical race theory is the same thing as culturally relevant teaching. And when I read this, to me, it does sound different. There are a couple of questions. There are a couple of questions, just on your slide, of recognize and understand their own cultural beliefs and biases. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Sure. Each of us comes from our lived experiences, and our culture adds in to those experiences. And so my culture is, I was born and reared here in Columbia by an AME minister and his wife, and through parents that worked hard, that provided for my sister and I. I came through public education. All of those kinds of things are part of the culture that I carry with me. I love to crochet. I'm not an expert at crochet, but it's something I enjoy doing. And so if somebody wanted to describe something to me to help me understand a concept, they might say, "Okay, Helen, you like to crochet. You know when you do a single stitch and how that's different from a double stitch." And use that as a basis then for saying to me how something may be in mathematics or something in science is different. That's using my culture to help me to understand what's being said. I know that you're an avid swimmer. And so if someone was trying to explain a concept to you, they might use something from swimming. I don't know enough about it to tell you what that would be. But use that as a way to say, "Ms. Agostini, think about it this way. This stroke does this, but another stroke does something else. These two things are different. They're not the same." So our culture is all of those things that build into us to make us who we are, our lived experiences. All of those things are part of our culture. Then all of us have biases. Biases are natural. They're ordinary. They happen all the time. They come from the things that we've learned, things that build up in our brain, either our own experiences or things that we were taught. And so some biases have no impact one way or the other. I love chocolate cake. I don't like coconut cake. I'll bypass coconut every time because I'm just biased that way. I'll stop at chocolate every time. It means nothing to anybody except my doctor and me who says you probably should bypass all of it. But other biases can have a detrimental effect in the classroom. So for example, if a teacher has a belief, unconscious belief, so implicit biases are not conscious, they're unconscious belief, that because a student comes from a home that is extremely socially disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged, that they're not going to come in at the level of other students, then that's a bias that could be very detrimental to the student because the teacher then, without being conscious of it, could be saying things, doing things to let the student know, "I don't think you're on this level. I think you're down here." And so the reason why I believe that culturally relevant teacher, teaching asks us to be aware of those things is so that we can work around them, so that we're treating students fairly, that we're using the student's culture as a baseline to help them learn from them. Because every student comes in to us with knowledge, even the ones that we test and say, "Maybe they're not as high as where they should be." They have some kind of knowledge. And so it's important to be able to understand those cultural reference and then to recognize our own biases to make sure that we're not doing anything to hinder those students.
And my next question is, we've talked a lot about equity. And I hear the buzz of equity and the expectation that the outcomes will be the same. Is that what we're expecting here?
The way I understand equity, Ms. Agostini, is we provide every student with what that student needs. Helen might need a small group in a classroom. Tony might need one-on-one with the teacher. Hamilton might not need any of that. He may be soaring and ready to go. Whatever it is that any individual student needs, we provide that to that student so that student can rise to their highest potential. We're preparing students to put them on their pathways to purpose. And each student comes to that pathway in a different way. They come at different times. They come at different places. But our job is to find where that student is when they come to us and build them up from there. And that's not going to be the same for any two students. I have twin daughters who are here tonight. And even though a lot of people can't tell them apart, equity would say, I have to look at one and say, "What is your need for this?" Look at the other and say, "What is your need?" And then figure out, how do I provide both of them what they need? And so what we are asking our teachers to do is to think about how you do that in your classroom. How do you scaffold your information? How do you differentiate your instruction so that students, when they come in, get the most that they can possibly get? And our goal, I don't know that our goal is to provide a place where everyone is equal. We want every student to go as high as they can possibly go. And that may not be the same for every student. But we have to have those high expectations for every student and a belief that they can go as high as they can.
So the expectation is that they reach their full potential.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
But each student's potential is different.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And then what about, we hear about privilege. Are we talking about privilege in this?
I have done presentations that have addressed privilege. I'm not sure what you mean when you say, "Are we talking about privilege?"
Well, I guess, how is it implemented or weaved into the education of our students when we're talking about biases and privilege? How is that incorporated into the curriculum?
In the work that I have done here in the district, it has been with staff persons, talking about privilege and understanding what privilege is. By virtue of us being here, all of us have some privilege. We don't all have the same privilege. So when students come into a classroom, if a teacher has a classroom of twenty different students, students have varying levels of privilege within that classroom. Think of it in terms of, if you're trying to describe to a student the feeling of standing on the beach and having the wave come in and the sand, as the wave goes out, go out between your toes, what that feels like. If you've never experienced that, it's very difficult to put it into words. And so we can't make assumptions that because we live in a state where the mountains are closed and the beach is closed, that all of our students have had opportunities like that. Privilege might allow a person to think, "Well, surely you've seen the ocean before. Surely you've seen real mountains before." But there are students who have not seen the ocean before or seen the real mountains before. And so we have to be aware of our thought processes that might allow us to make assumptions that students have seen some things that they have not or understand some things that they have not. Again, they're different privileges for different people. We don't all have the same. And so whatever your privilege is, I ask staff, identify that. There should be no guilt about it because in the definition that I use for privilege, it's basically an unearned benefit that you have. I have the unearned benefit of being the daughter of two college-educated parents. I didn't do anything to cause that to happen. They did that. But that's part of my privilege, that I came from two educated parents. I don't feel guilty about that. I'm happy about that. I know there are other people that don't share in that same privilege. And so the question I have to ask myself is, so now what am I going to do to help others who don't have that same privilege? So that they don't have that background, did not have the benefit of parents who could help with homework because they had been educated beyond the sixth grade, the eighth grade, the ninth grade, beyond high school? How am I going to use the privilege that I have of having attained a bachelor's degree, a Juris Doctorate degree, to help bring somebody else forward, to help pull them forward? And so I recognize I have educational privilege, but it's not enough to recognize that privilege. And you shouldn't feel guilt about it, but you want to be able to pull and help and bring others forward.
So basically, from what I've heard you say, privilege to be sounds more like opportunity versus race.
Well, I don't know that it has anything in particular to do with race.
Thank you.
My personal belief is there are some racial privileges. But again, it's nothing to feel guilty about because none of us decided our own race. Our parents decided that. And so if you have that privilege, use that privilege, but help someone else who may not have that privilege. Help give someone else the opportunity that you've had because of your privilege that they may not have had. Help them to see something that they don't even know how to envision. Because it's one thing to tell a student, "Dream big. We want you to do this, and we want you to be this." If they've never seen it, if they've never felt it, if they've never touched it, it's hard to dream it. And so our job is to make sure that we give them enough so that they can dream it.
And my final question, and I think this would be more for Dr. Davis. I did get a call from a teacher who was concerned about the book SOAR and that it was, or excuse me, STAMPED, which was in the SOAR program. Did we use that material this summer?
Yes, we did. And thank you for addressing me with the question so that I can address the board and the community as it relates to this topic. And I'll get to that. I'll start just by backing up a little bit. And I appreciate Dr. Grant for that wonderful presentation and her sharing and giving her perspective on some of the questions that are asked. But as the person who has set the vision for where we are and where we're going, the school district, I think it's important that I address those questions for you as well. And the first thing I would say, the confusion for critical race theory and cultural relevant teaching. There was no confusion four years ago when we started cultural relevant teaching. There was literally no confusion. We did cultural relevant teaching, cultural relevant pedagogy. We brought in Dr. Boute. We took teachers of black, white, and of different genders to the African-American Museum, as well as to the Holocaust Museum, to DC, as a cohort of individuals as we were developing our cohort of teachers who were going through our very first cultural relevant teaching or cultural relevant pedagogy training in the school district. I think it was a group of maybe fifty teachers. There was no conversations about critical race theory at that time. I think that was about four, maybe five years ago, around the time I became Assistant Superintendent. The confusion came in when it became political. And it became a part of a political process to talk about the issues of critical race theory and the concern. But that's only been within a one year. Two years ago, we didn't, I didn't even know what critical race theory was. As a scholar and a person who studied for many years, never heard of it. But now it's become the buzzword. And the last I saw, there was a document that had been floating around for parents who were coming to school boards to talk about this, to use and combine cultural relevant teaching and critical race theory and saying it's one in the same. So I just want to be transparent and honest that that's where the confusion began to come in at, was when the attempt was to combine the two so that we can address the issues and concerns as it relates to cultural relevant critical race theory and tying it exactly, or tying it together, the cultural relevant teaching. So that's where the confusion came in at. The equity issue, equity for us is about opportunity for students, is our responsibility. I think we all, as leaders, have to advocate for equity. Equity is, as Dr. Grant so elegantly stated about giving you what you need at a time, but I put it in the terminology of this. Some students come to the game only needing ten yards to score. They have had, my children will be an example of that. They don't need as much. They only need maybe two to three plays to get across the goal line. Some kids need the whole playbook. And it's our responsibility to open up the entire playbook to get every last student across the goal line, whatever that playbook, whatever that encompasses. But even within that, there's an understanding as it translates to privilege, that there are certain privileges that are given to individuals. And I know we want to shy away from the fact that there are racial privileges that exist. But the reality is, we do not teach it in a curriculum. There's no curriculum that is in Richland Two or in the state of South Carolina that talks specifically about white privilege or racial privilege. But it is a conversation that's come up in classrooms, as it should, because we are raising people to be critical thinkers. And so they should be able to responsibly articulate their position at the appropriate grade level and age as it relates to that. Because we want to produce, and everyone knows this, global citizens prepared to lead and excel in their chosen pathway. And our students cannot be global citizens if they are not critically aware, if they are not aware of some benefits and privileges that they have to bring to the table. There are some privileges that men are given that women are not given. There's some privileges that able-bodied students or students who are not special education students are given that students of special education are given. There are privileges that our gifted and talented students receive that our non-gifted and talented students receive. There are privileges, like some of our students have classes that are purposely designed, one to twelve. And then we have students who need more attention who are in classes that are one to twenty. That is a privilege of being a student who is gifted and talented or a student who is in a magnet program. So we have to be honest and be ready to address those things. As it relates to STAMP, we utilize the book STAMP as a document. And so the whole entire book wasn't read. And I don't know who the teacher was that called, that was, I think it was an eighth-grade teacher. And we have a process, as I stated in response, of how we would address anything that would be controversial, a topic that a teacher was uncomfortable teaching it, or want to have a conversation with academics about the top, about the document or about the book. But I just took the liberty to just kind of go through some other books that have also been controversial that may even still be in existence that we use in literature and other things to teach topics. Books like Mice of Men or books like The Invisible Man or Catcher in the Rye, or It's Me, God, Margaret. All those books have at some point either been banned or even considered controversial but has been used in literature and maybe even in historical contexts. But we have used the book STAMP. And the book, we pull out excerpts from the book, and we have discussions around that book. And the discussions are aligned and have been properly vetted by our, I think, very highly capable academic team who have provided questions that require our kids to critically think and assess and analyze historical content and in a historical context and how that moves us forward as a group of individuals, particularly as students here in Richland School District Two. Questions like, "What inspired Nat Turner?" Questions like, "What was the cash crop in America during this time period?" Questions like, "How did Frederick Douglass spread his story?" None of those questions suggest that we're teaching critical race theory. These are the same types of questions that shouldn't, should require some inquiry, some analysis, some comparison, some compare and contrast, some depth of knowledge and thinking. These are the types of questions that our teachers were asking. And the material, I thought, was quite appropriate because it was specifically for eleventh-grade students. And these are students who, of course, would either be, possibly would be in our US History courses and have taken other courses up to that time. But yes, we have used STAMP. And we have the resources that are connected to the US History and Constitution, the US History and Constitution standards, as well as the course for anyone who would like to review the types of questions that our students were presented with during the SOAR program this summer.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Davis. Ms. Mackey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Grant, thank you for your presentation. I know it was only a snapshot of all that you could have stood here and shared with us this evening. I thank you for taking the time to provide historical content, which is important and intent. And I appreciate it. We all come to the table of life with diversity blind spots. By virtue of our worldview, our world perspective, it makes us unique. And the things that we bring to the table. I can remember being in school, I'm a bookworm. I love to read. I can remember my favorite books being, when I was younger, Huckleberry Finn and Tom Sawyer. And I remember my mom talking to me about the components of it. Nobody has a problem with Huckleberry Finn and Tom Sawyer. They're considered quote-unquote classics. They are riddled with slavery, things, N-words that are used frequently. And I can remember being a child in school and reading those books aloud And I can remember being a child in school and reading those books aloud when we had to take turns reading aloud in the classroom. Nobody had a problem with things like that. So part of what you were talking about is taking the blinders off of people with diversity blind spots and having people think about equity in different ways, not just, you know, reading, writing, arithmetic, but all components of the academic experience. And so I appreciate your presentation. And I know that you're available any time we have questions. But I thank you for this. I appreciate it, Dr. Grant. You are a rock star.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mackey. Any other board members before I say something?
Yeah, I also appreciate the conversation. It's certainly one that can be difficult at times. And it does take a skilled facilitator. So when we talk about privilege, you know, if we focus on certain privileges, white privilege, then there are some folks, myself at times, have been offended, and not necessarily because of the idea that I'm white and I have privilege. But if that's the only focus, then you start to feel sort of attacked. But if we talk about privilege, educational privilege, societal privilege, economic privilege, and we understand that there are different privileges and that they affect us in different ways, that's a conversation that is, to your point and Dr. Davis's point, an academic conversation that allows us to understand the different privileges that we come with, and it's also situational. So I may have a certain white privilege in the world. If I am at an African American sorority or an African American church, I may be at a disadvantage because that privilege doesn't apply there. And so I think it's a very difficult conversation, one that's nuanced. And skilled facilitation makes a huge difference in how that comes across so that we don't offend anyone, anybody for any privilege or any opportunity that they come with that they didn't have, say, or that they worked hard to build throughout their life, right? At some point, you have an educational privilege that you built yourself. Your parents certainly gave you the foundation, but then you expounded on it. And then that becomes a privilege then for your children, for yourself, for your family. And so it can be a difficult conversation. But I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate. I didn't really understand the full complexity of the laws that were put in place. I really hadn't spent a lot of time with that. So I appreciate seeing that and knowing it's really illegal for us to do the things that are decried about critical race theory. So great presentation. Thank you for your time and the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Grant? Anybody else before I speak? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McFadden?
I would like to say thank you for your presentation. It was really good. I think because it says culturally relevant teaching, it's CRT, a lot of people may get that confused and just lump them together. And that was my understanding in the beginning. But in the same vein, you know, like Mr. Manning said, if he goes to a black church, he's in the minority. I was raised around predominantly Caucasian people. I was a little black girl and a kid in a class and in a school with mostly white kids. So I kind of understand, but I never really felt out of place. I never really felt racism in such that way. And so coming to different places, it's different. The culture is different. And so whenever, some people say they're not racist, you have to understand that maybe they're really not, you know? Maybe they just, and they're feeling attacked in some type of way. And because sometimes we have biases, you know? Sometimes whenever I'm in a room like this, you know, it's pretty much equal. Well, maybe not actually. When I look around, it's not really equal in here as far as race is concerned. And sometimes when you're in an area, depending on where you go, it just depends on what your own biases are. And I appreciate you saying that because we do have our own biases. And then there are people who are, you know, culturally conscious of that. And some people really just are not. They don't see like what other people see. They can't understand that I am not a racist. I don't understand how you see that I'm a racist. And so sometimes it flames a fire when they feel like they're being attacked, you know? And that's just my two pieces on it. I love the presentation because it helped me to understand, well, what's the difference, you know? I don't really got a clear understanding, you know, but I do understand the CRT aspect of it all. And so thank you so very much for that. And I just appreciate it so much, meeting people where they are and going through it that way. So I appreciate your presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Caution Parker?
And I know we're running short on time. This just reminds me of something. When I, my first year as a school administrator at DENT, and of course, I was over the sixth grade and I had to handle all the discipline. And a teacher wrote a child up for speaking to her improperly. And so, of course, you know, I went, I said, what do you mean improperly? Did he curse at you? Did he? Just what did he do? He didn't say ma'am. I said, excuse me? He didn't say ma'am. It took the longest for me to understand that. Now, I'm raised by an Army drill sergeant who says sir and ma'am all the time. But we were raised never to say sir and ma'am to anyone unless we were in the military. That's how I was raised. And totally integrated situation. And it took the long, and of course, I just would scream at the teacher. How can you write about a child because he didn't say ma'am? Was he rude? No. Did he roll his eyes at you? No. Did he turn his back on? No. None of that. He didn't say ma'am. And that's when I really, it really slammed me about the cultural differences in our environment and how we're raised. And just everything that plays such a big part in what we do. And that's why I was so glad that the superintendent, John Hudges, at that time, started Minority Recruitment Committee in Richland 2. And that started bringing about a change in recognition in Richland 2. But I just wanted to share that. That is something that every time I think about everything or focus on when we're talking about race or environment or cultures, I always remember that, how shocked I was. And it just, that's when I got it. That's when I got it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anybody else before? Okay. All right. Dr. Grant, I want to say thank you for a wonderful presentation. Cultural competency is what I actually did my dissertation on. So I am over the moon about that. That's one thing that I came in with passion about. It left me with a few little key points that I wanted to add to the conversation or just add for a point of reference. Number one, cultural competency is not watering down the instruction. I've heard that over and over again. It is not watering down the instruction. It is finding different ways to show the instruction using items and situations and stories that relate to the students that are being taught. Number two, make sure that the students are being able to see themselves in a classroom. I'm a graduate of Spring Valley High School when there weren't many people that looked like me at Spring Valley High School. I had moved here from New Jersey and went to high school here. So the only teacher that I've ever had that looked like me, if I only had one, my whole entire school life. So it is good to see the inclusion of teachers because we need to, you can't be something that you can't see. So it's good to see that. And then here's the other thing. Cultural competency is not just for minorities of African American race. Cultural competency is inclusive of other nationalities and other races. I think sometime we steer the conversation just on African Americans, but it's also inclusive of others also. And here's one that is really near to dear to my heart. History is not assimilation. It is inclusion based on facts. I've always said that. We don't ask any other race to negate their history. We don't ask any other race to water down their history for others to feel comfortable. Because once you lose your history, you don't know where you're going, and you don't know where you came from. So we can't assimilate to the point that we lose who we are because our children have to have that history that was already watered down and lost from our past. So we have to make sure that assimilation does not overtake the facts of what history really was. We are here to teach history, not hate. We're here to teach facts and not hate. But history is history. And like I said, we don't ask any other race to water down their history. We don't ask them to pretend it doesn't exist for others to feel comfortable. And we shouldn't do that to our students. So those are some of the key things that I wanted to add to the conversation. And I'm glad that we're having this type of conversation tonight because it has become political, like Dr. Davis has said. Because when I got on this board, when we started talking about cultural competency and you were doing it, and it was a big push for me, we didn't have any of this. So I'm just going to say, in general, be careful of what you align yourself to. Look at what is really the intention. And the intention is to increase achievement for all students, not just African Americans, not just whites, but others inclusive of that. So thank you for a wonderful presentation. You have stood there. I appreciate you so much, Dr. Grant.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. All right, moving on. We're going to go ahead now. We're going to go. We're going to go ahead on to 10.1 draft agenda items for December 14th meeting. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, to our public that's in attendance with us and those of you viewing. I'm going over the draft agenda for the December 14th, 2021 board meeting. It's a regular scheduled board meeting held here at R2I2 with executive session, a call to order an executive session starting at 5:30. In executive session currently in the draft agenda, we have student appeals. We'll come out of executive session for public session beginning at 6:30. Where we'll have our public input session on SIR 3. We'll have our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, followed by the approval of our agenda, which is followed by the approval of the consent agenda. We'll have public participation, number one. We'll have voting on executive session items, which stands currently at student appeals only. We'll have unfinished business action requested, which will be the approval of policy revision, BID, board member compensation and expenses. We'll have new business action requested, which is the approval of the 403B plan. We'll have new business, no action requested, which will be the superintendent's highlights, first quarter financial report, policy BEDB board agenda. We'll have an update on the budget as well as an update on assessments. This will be followed by the draft agenda items for the January 11th board meeting. Approval of those draft agenda items, public participation, number two, if needed, board and superintendent comments, executive session two if needed, and voting on executive session two items if needed as well. And this will conclude with an adjournment.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Davis. May I have a motion for the approval of the draft agenda items for the December 14th, 2021 meeting?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the draft agenda as proposed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mack. Okay, y'all getting tired. Y'all ready? Motion in a second, fast. Ms. Mack is seconded. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Agostini?
I move that we, I move to have a human resources update included at our next meeting.
Ms. Agostini, would that be something that we could do inclusive in a board brief as opposed to a presentation?
Well, I'm curious, potentially. What I'm looking to have resolved is, I'd like to know about the substitution. But more importantly, two years ago, I thought we had resolved the issue of our teachers who were using their planning time to go in and take over for a classroom. I thought that was being resolved. It hasn't been resolved. I'd like to know how we're going to get that resolved.
Okay, well, my suggestion would be to try to do that in a board brief. Dr. Davis, what is your, what are your thoughts?
Yes, you can, we can answer it. If you would send those questions in writing, we will give the responses to those questions regarding substitutes, regarding teachers using their planning period. We did a pilot program. We discontinued the pilot program, but we're actually having a meeting with our FAC to discuss how we can bring that back and equitably distribute the workload to our teachers as well as pay them financially and how they're going to be paid. So that's actually on our FAC agenda for tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken, to get input from our teachers before we go forward with another plan. But when we presented that information, it was a pilot, so it wasn't a resolution to solve the problem. I will state, just for the record, this will not solve the problem. We're still going to have shortages and classes unfilled as a result of shortages of subs, unfilled vacancies with teachers, and as one of our presenters presented today in public participation, a high number of absentee as well. And that is also inclusive of quarantines or anything else related to COVID. So I appreciate that question. I'll look forward to providing the board with the information once I receive the questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments at this time? If so, then I believe we are at the, it was seconded? It was seconded? Okay, now. Let's take the vote on that electronically, please. No, she's left the conversation around 7 o'clock. Motion passes, five yes, one no, one abstentia. No, I'm sorry, one not present. Okay, moving on to, we don't have a need for public participation too. So we're on 14.1 board and superintendent comments. I'm going to start with Ms. Agostini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And in the spirit of gratitude, first of all, thank you to all those who came out to speak tonight in public participation. Also gratitude to the board and to Dr. Grant for giving us this presentation tonight on critical race theory versus culturally relevant teaching. Gratitude to our veterans for serving, and then finally to all of our employees, especially our teachers who are covering and not being compensated. I'm grateful for you, you know, stepping up to the plate and just grateful for all of our employees. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Ms. McFadden?
Come on. Okay, so I just wanted to say real quick, I seen a Facebook meme that said something like, there's terms, you know, we shouldn't be worried about someone who's serving, you know, a four-year term in the president's house or we should be worried about the congressmen who, you know, rotate out their lifetime. And so, you know, being on this board, I understand that staff and Dr. Davis are pretty much here for the long haul. And, you know, I'm new, and so every two years, I spoke with someone, every two years, y'all are faced with this situation of having either a new board or a recurring board or something like that. And so I understand whenever, you know, there's things that need to get done, that you guys are like, hey, you know, this is just what we have to keep doing, been here 10, 15 years, you know, and I'm understanding that. And I would just like to say, I appreciate the presentations and the information that we're getting on a consistent and a continuous basis. You know, if I had some time to think about some things, this is completing my first year on the board. And, you know, when we're going through things and we're trying to work things out, you know, we don't always agree, you know? And there was a gentleman that came that was a parliamentary, and he said, you know, there's thickness, you know, in the atmosphere. And we try to work that out. We try to work through it, you know, and there's a divide, there truly is, you know, from our constituents who we see the organizational chart, our constituents, some of them, not all of them, but enough to where they're making enough noise where I looked, I don't pay attention to the news that much. But I started going through the news and, oh my gosh, you know, I started reading some of the articles, you know? And I understand, the young lady who came up here, she said that she was a deacon's wife. And I understand her completely, you know? And it is hard for us, you know, to try to come to agreements. But I understand the atmosphere that she's referring to. And, you know, we're trying to work together, and I want to let the community know that we're trying the best that we can because like Dr. Holmes said, there's some people who feel this way and some people who feel another way. We got to find that fine line. If you have masks, some people are going to be upset, like the teachers. The gentleman who spoke, if you do have masks or don't have masks, you're going to make other people upset. So it's a difficult decision, and we're being pulled in different directions. So, you know, I would just say, you know, bear with us. We're doing the best we can. You know, it's not just masks, it's the CRT, it's a whole bunch of things that are going on here in Richland 2 and statewide and nationally, you know, we're trying to work through these things. School board is getting a lot of attention from what I have found out recently, you know? And so I am hoping that we can continue to move forward because this was a great meeting tonight, you know, that we can move forward and continue to have pleasant meetings. Well, with the exception of a big outburst a little earlier, but as far as conducting business, you know? And guys, you know, I got away to the board as a parent. So when I'm coming, I'm not coming with an educational background. I'm coming as a political scientist and a parent. And that's my role. And each of us have a different role that we play on the board. Not everyone's going to contribute the same thing. Everyone has something different to contribute. And so I would just like to say that as we keep going forward, that we're all respecting each other in our proper positions of where we are. And I want to say thank you so much to the staff that has to stay late in the evening tonight. We appreciate all that you do, all the presentations that y'all give us, and just say thank you to our community and our partners.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden. Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker?
Just wanted to say a few things. Dr. Davis, again, your highlights are just outstanding. I just love them. I just love them crazy about those things, especially the really positive slant.
Especially the, the really positive slant and positive recognition of what we're really doing in Richard School District Two. And all, not all this other stuff that, that keeps happening that which, which we have absolutely no control. Uh, congratulate, uh, Richland School District Two on the accreditation process, five-year process. I can remember we used to shake in our boots whenever it was time to go through that process. But, but we've done well and we did very well. Thank you. Um, looking forward to the Order of the Flame Recognition Thursday evening. Um, thank you for the reports this evening. They were very informative. Um, and again, um, Dr. Grant, um, just, just outstanding, just outstanding. I think it's, I just really wish everyone had been here to hear, instead of going on, 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 on what they hear, rumors and all this other stuff. Get the facts. Get the facts. Um, and I hope everybody has a, um, a great Thanksgiving and a safe one. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Uh, Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in the spirit of keeping the main thing the main thing, um, thank you, Dr. Davis, for, for highlighting our, our community staff and, and student achievements, um, and noteworthy just tidbits that are good things to know. It's National Education Week, so for all of the people in Richland Two who work together to ensure that the end user, the product that we are delivering, uh, to students, is students and educating them, thank you for that, not just this week, but all the time. Um, special thank you to Ms. Carter, Dr. Grant, Dr. Davis, and all the people who worked together on the Veterans Day Program. It was awesome. I so enjoyed that. Um, some, uh, oftentimes, you know, um, uh, virtual programs kind of lose their, lose a little something by the virtue of their being, by the, by them being, by virtue of their being virtual. How's that for a tongue twister? But, um, but thank you for that. It was an amazing program. Brigadier General Hubbard, one of the things he talked about was, um, what can you do for us? And he talked about how the sacrifices that our military families, um, have made for us, what are we doing with those sacrifices? How are we living our best lives, being kind, being helpful, giving back and just, it touched me. I appreciate that. So thank you for all of the hands, um, that were at the table to put that together. The people who stayed here tonight because you wanted to glean information, thank you for being here. Those of you who got to be here with name tags, you know, name plates on your desk, thank y'all for being here. Um, everybody be safe. Have a wonderful evening. Bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Mr. Manning.
Madam Chair, I'd say it's a long meeting, but Representative Bigpen probably doesn't believe so with some of the, uh, marathons that they have at the State House. So I, that's why he's able to hang in there with us the whole time. But lots of great information. We accomplished a lot. Um, I thought it was a fantastic meeting where we learned a lot, uh, we accomplished a lot. And, you know, this is really what it's about. I, I do, you know, it's interesting, sometimes we get requested to put things on the agenda. Um, we have community outpour and then when we get to the actual topic, the ones that asked for the information aren't present. Um, I think it's an, it, it is a two-way street that, uh, you know, when you want information or you request information or you're unsure, that you're also present to make sure that you get both sides of the story so that you completely understand what's going on. So for those of you who stayed with us, thank you for being here, um, to make sure that you're fully informed of what's going on in the district and, and how that all comes to play. And for the board members that, uh, that are still here with us, thank you, um, for the, the meeting tonight. I think we still have more to go. Um, but, uh, and, and I do want to thank our teachers. To Dr. Davis's point, you know, it's, it's just such a tough spot to be in. We have a national shortage of everything, computer chips, employees, um, all kinds of things. And our teachers unfortunately are getting crushed. It's, it's not that the district is, you know, not hiring the right people or trying to help, we just don't have the people. And it's an untenable situation to be in. Unfortunately, it's a multiplicative effect. The more pressure they're under because we don't have the people, the less we have and it just builds. And so I appreciate Dr. Davis. I know, as you said multiple times, your team's meeting to try to figure out what we can do to help with it. Um, I love for some of these parents that are out here that are passionate about our district and change, you know, come sub, come be part of the solution. Help us sit in the classroom, see what's being taught, see the interactions, put, walk in a, a teacher's shoes for a minute. Um, I think it would be a fantastic opportunity for our public to help us. But with that, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thanks for a great meeting. Appreciate it. And, uh, can I say the podium? I'm still impressed with the podium that y'all built, like the state of the district. It just looked fantastic and so functional. So thank you guys for your work behind the scenes to, to make us look good and make all this work. That's it.
Okay. Dr. Davis.
Mr. Manning, I want to thank you for, for pointing that out. As you know, school administration and district administration works very hard to support our teachers. And I am very conscious of when we try to create a us versus them mentality. I read information and things like that and it says, "The District" or "You All" and things like that. And, and you can tell a lot about where someone is in with the language that, that they use, not us or we. Um, I was sharing it earlier this week with a group of, of the terminology, Zulu terminology, um, Ubuntu, which means I am because we are. And that's such a powerful statement, "I am because we are." We have to see ourselves as a collective team and as a team that's working together. Teams don't always necessarily agree on the best direction to take, but if the communal spirit still exists and we have a team approach to things, we'll get more accomplished together than we will separately. And so it may take us a little longer to get there together, but we will, we will definitely arrive together and everyone will benefit from that. And so I think it's important for us to remember that we have that communal spirit that we, that it resonates in all that we say and that we do. Because what we say and what we do is, 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 is really about who we are and who we are and who our, what our character is. I do want to thank my team again for all the outstanding work that you all do behind the scenes to provide. This is a lot of information that we had to provide and a very, uh, a, a lot of information we had to provide. And I'm so glad we had a, a longer window of time to get it done because this is the only board meeting this month. But thank you all for the wonderful presentations and, uh, for you giving up your time and your families to be here as well. And to those of you who are still in attendance, thank you all for being here as well and to supporting this district through the good and the bad. Um, definitely it is important and it's valued and I'm appreciative of that and to all of our teachers as well. Um, just for the, for the sake of time, I'm going to cut very short what I had to say, but I just want us to remember when we talk about equity. Equity creates a deep sense of belonging and it amplifies student voices. It demonstrates the belief in unlimited potential of all learners and it, it removes barriers. And that's what the educational experience is supposed to be about. We, we want to try to remove the barriers that exist for all of our students. And when I say all, I mean capital letters A-L-L, all students as best we can. And we need to take a hard look at the demographics of our students and understand, um, who we have and who we are, who we are being entrusted to educate. But it's important for us to do that with a sense of understanding that this is a team effort and a village approach to making this thing happen. I just want to, then, for appreciation, I want to say thank you to my board. Thank you, thank you all. Thank you for supporting the work of this district administration. I know all the times that it publicly, sometimes it does seem we, like, we always agree, but behind the scenes, I appreciate you all having those real difficult and challenging conversations behind the scenes. But then when we come out in the public, we have a united front and we stand together as a team and as a unit on how to move this district forward. And that is very, very important that we continue to do that. So thank you all for, for all of your support, uh, and ensuring that our students are getting premier educational experience in this district.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Madam Chair, I, I forgot to thank some people. Can I just do a quick?
No.
Interjection, real quick.
You talked a long time now. I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I, I meant to also thank, because Dr. Davis mentioned team and I, I, I don't do this enough. I want to thank, um, uh, Donna and Taylor Manning, um, for their support.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, um, at this time, I'd like to just say, um, thank you to our orchestra group that came out, um, for our veterans, um, program that I was lucky to be a part of. I see Kelsey sitting out there. Thank you so much for all your hard work with that. Um, I'd like to also say thank you for the varying voices that came tonight as parents to speak, the varying voices. Sometimes we forget that we serve 27,000 students and the voices are going to vary. So I thank you for the varying voices that showed up tonight. I'd also like to say that, um, it is National Education Week, as Ms. Mackey pointed out, and to our school staff, and that includes our teachers and everybody, our, our assistants, our administrators, thank you for all the hard work that you're doing. And I would like y'all to know that it does not go on deaf ear that we know that there's a shortage. We know that you are working overtime. We know that you're holding classes. We are, Dr. Davis and his team are working diligently to provide that. But we can't, we can't invent subs if they're not here. That's a national shortage. So we're working, but we are going to work hard to try to address some of those things. Maybe there's some money in there, Dr. Davis. Hint, hint. Maybe there's some money. But anyway, also congratulations toward the golf, the golf championship and also for all the great reports that we had tonight. But the, um, but, um, and thank you, Dr. Grant, because you're kind of like, you stood in the gap of a political storm right now and you stood toe to toe and you spoke your truth and we appreciate you for that. And for all the other reports, I know the work that went into it. I appreciate you for that also. But I wanted to give you a special kudos on that. Okay, having said that, um, we will now go to 15.1. Public session will be recessed and the board will convene in executive session. We are not done. So we're going to, um, I have a motion to move into executive session two.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I move that we, uh, convene into executive session to discuss, receive a legal advice regarding a pending claim.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I don't know, who said that? Who was that? Was that you, Dr. Caution Parker? Okay, okay, I'll take Dr. Caution Parker for two. Okay, Dr. Caution Parker, any discussion? Okay. Now, seeing none, we'll take the vote. Okay, we will, we will recess ourselves into executive session two. Huh? Yeah, I got it. I think I got it. Oh, I think I'm dead. I think I'm dead.
Oh, we're dead?
I think we're dead. Is it? Okay, I'm, I'm back. Okay, I need a motion to please come out of executive session two.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we convene executive session two at 10:33.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we will take the vote. Hand, hand raise. Motion passes, two.
Six.
Six, six and one not in, not here. Okay, um, as, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, I make a motion we adjourn. I make a motion we adjourn.
It is long and I'm tired. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Madam Chair, I, I move adjournment.
Second.
Second. Oh, oh, y'all, okay, all right. Yay, yay. Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's take a hand vote. Zero, we're out. Thank you for a great meeting.